Cat TV is celebrating 30 years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next 30 years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.
Welcome, everyone, to the Bennington Select Board Meeting of March 14, 2022. We are in the Bennington Fire Facility, and as always, we have a very full agenda tonight. I'm Jeannie Jenkins. I chair this board, and I will ask my fellow board members to introduce themselves, starting with Gary.
I'm Gary Corey. Hi, Tom Haley, thanks for coming.
Good evening, I'm Jim Carroll.
I'm Jeanne Connor.
Hi, Bruce Lee Clark.
Good evening, Sarah Perrin.
Sarah, do you want to make a small announcement about Pi Day?
Oh, yes, and today is Pi Day, 3.14, and anybody that's here, there's pizza over there if you'd like to grab a slice. That's a little lighthearted thing here.
It's wonderful. All right, so let's start this evening as we always do with Pledge of Allegiance. Jim, would you lead us in that?
Sure. Our pledge of allegiance is to the United States of America, to the Republic which was founded, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jim. All right, and then Jeanne, would you please read the vision statement that guides all our work?
Happy to. Bennington is a welcoming, engaged, inclusive, resilient community where everyone, regardless of identity, shares in our vitality and benefits from an outstanding quality of life.
Thank you very much. All right, so first up is the consent agenda, which includes the minutes of February 14, February 21, the warrants, and the liquor licenses. For the purposes of discussion, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion, any corrections for Nancy, or questions for Stu that you haven't already addressed? Nope? All right, then, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. Any abstentions? All right, great, thank you very much. Next up is our monthly update with Dr. Trey Dobson on COVID. Thank you so much for being here.
Absolutely. I have to pull up my notes here because I wrote a few things down. So let's talk first about, there's no great order to do this, so I'm going to try to go through it best I can. Let's first talk about mask wearing. So right now, and I'm going to get into this in a minute, but we are in an area where mask wearing by the CDC is noted to be optional for healthy people and recommended for those who are vulnerable, and by vulnerable, what we mean by that is at risk of getting severe sequelae or disease from COVID-19. So I'm going to explain why I'm wearing a mask today, because I'm actually healthy and I'm not in the vulnerable population. So I'm wearing a mask for several reasons. One is I'm in Rome, everyone's wearing a mask, and so I want to respect that. Second is, I actually just got back from vacation. I traveled around, I was in Florida, I was at an NBA game in New York City, so my level of exposure, even though I was wearing a mask at the time, was much higher, so out of respect for those that I'm going to come in contact with for the next, you know, five to seven days, I'm going to wear a mask. You might ask why I'm wearing this mask, because normally I wear a surgical mask, like Jim is wearing right now, and the reason is, is because I figured out I can actually speak better in them, this one, because it's got a little bit further space. It has really nothing to do with my own protection, because I feel very comfortable in a surgical mask. So what I'm trying to bring out is, we are really moving towards individualism now in our decision-making. Someone might say, well, why didn't we do that all the time? Well, you can't do that when the prevalence of the virus is too high, because we remember wearing a mask actually protects others who were more vulnerable. So that's actually some of the reasons why I'm wearing mine now, as I mentioned. But also, when the virus is highly prevalent, everyone needs to do it in order to stay protective. But when the prevalence drops a lot, then we can say someone who is highly vulnerable can wear a well-fitting mask, they can move towards a respirator if they want, a respirator is an N95 like I'm wearing, but the whole population doesn't necessarily need to wear it. And the reason is, is the data doesn't support that it makes much of a difference. If you look at counties where there's a real high compliance with mask use, and those that were not such a high compliance with mask use, when the virus prevalence was low, there was no difference in transmission. When the viral presence is high, there is a difference. So that brings me to something else that's just, we've talked about for a long time, we've known in Vermont for a long time, and we've known really everywhere for a long time, but the data is just now overwhelming, that the biggest thing we can do is not necessarily wearing masks, not distancing, not staying at home, but is being up to date with vaccination. It clearly impacts the hospitalization rates. So if you're not up to date with vaccination, whether you're young or old, you have a much, 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 several times higher chance of being in the hospital, but not only that, you have a higher chance of spreading it to someone who ends up in the hospital. So if we can just kind of get past that now, and now we're in a different phase, and we're thinking about other things in the world, just staying up to date with vaccinations is very important. Up to date, by the way, means being vaccinated and then receiving all of the boosters that are recommended by the CDC and the Department of Health. So a couple of the things. Now, we've talked about mask wearing, and you know that the CDC about two weeks ago came out with their community levels, which is a recommendation on when you should be wearing masks, when you should be doing other things, and they have these different levels. Green is low, yellow is medium, and then orange or red is high. I don't know why it's not red, it's orange, maybe it prints better. And Bennington right now is yellow, actually, the whole state is yellow, except I think one county, maybe Rutland, is orange. And then that'll change. The way they do these community levels is they use three things. One is, they use the actual number of cases that are reported, which at this point is becoming not only less relevant, it's actually less accurate, because people aren't testing, and if they do test, they test at home, or actually, I said I was in New York City yesterday. It was unbelievable to me, the number of little tiny clinics, and when I say tiny clinics, they were trailers on the side of the sidewalks where people could go test. Zero people I saw being tested, by the way, which is such a stark difference from late January, when people couldn't find tests in New York City. But those aren't reported typically. I mean, they're supposed to, but they don't really report them. So that case number isn't really very helpful. What is helpful is numbers of new admissions into hospitals, and we can track that very well. How many new admissions in the past seven days have occurred in your county or in your state that's due to COVID-19? And we can track that pretty well, it's not 100% accurate. Then the third measure is the percent of beds that are occupied by COVID patients. That, which I have a lot of problems with, and I'll just give you an example of why. I don't know how they calculate it for Bennington County. I've tried to find out, but there's one hospital, so we'll use that as the example, it's SVMC, and we'll look at, we do report daily the number of patients that are admitted for COVID-19, or sorry, that are hospitalized with COVID-19. You know, it's been like two to three over the past week, a couple of weeks ago, it was more like six to eight, and then before that, of course, it was in the teens. But I don't know what they're using as their denominator. We are licensed for 99 beds. I've been here for 15 years, we've never had anywhere near 99 beds, but I assume that's what they're using. They could be using actual beds that we report out from some other metric, I don't know, the point being, it's a little bit obscure there. But I think if you take the data all together, and you put it, and you say, what areas of the country are high, what other areas of the country are low, it should be fairly accurate. So we can use that as a guide, and probably they'll refine it some more, they might use wastewater, they might use other things, and we can continue to use that guide. And I think the reason that that is so important is because if we have this fallacy that it's gone, or the cases are going to stay low, I mean, boy, we can't learn, right? I mean, what's happened since this pandemic? Up and down, up and down. It is unlikely that we will see large spikes occur again unless a variants develop that are resistant or have enough mutation that prior infection or vaccination aren't very effective. That's possible. It's, you know, I've got my fingers crossed, like everybody, that that's not going to happen. And it's actually biologically plausible that it won't happen, and there still is a chance it could, but it's biologically plausible that any mutations now from this coronavirus, the vaccination or prior infections should still protect us from hospitalization. That doesn't mean the cases won't increase, and they will. Let me just tell you, I don't know if you noticed, but you know they started increasing again in Germany and Europe, and not just a little bit, quite a bit, 30 to 50%, which gets a little scary, because you want to say, why are they increasing? And there's lots of different reasons. There is a variant there that is kind of taking hold, that's a little bit stronger than Omicron, or at least a little bit more transmissible, I should say, not stronger. And there may be other reasons. There's, people talk about the war that's going on and how that may affect it, it's hard to tell. The good news is, hospitalizations haven't really increased much, but the number of cases have, and what that means is, the risk to vulnerable adults has increased. So it's good that we have these levels, because this fall, hopefully it won't be until then, but cases will go back up as people start going back inside, as immunity starts to wane, because people don't get up to date with their vaccination, and because maybe they haven't been infected for so long, now their immunity starts to wane. And so it'll be important that we look at those metrics, and especially for vulnerable people, they could say, okay, I'm going to put my mask back on, and I'm going to go about my business, and it's going to be a lot better than it was in 2020 and 2021. So this is positive news, we have to stay on top of it. So a couple messages from that. If you are in that vulnerable population, which first off is anyone over 65, second, anyone with certain medical conditions that are pretty common, including diabetes, former smoker, overweight, these are things that all make you more susceptible. If you get sick, I mean, if you have a sore throat, if you have a cough, you should test yourself. And the kits are now available, you can get them for free online from the federal government, you can still get some from the state government, you can buy them if you would like. We really need to be in a mindset where we have these in the home, and we test. And if they are positive, and you're vulnerable, you're in those groups, you should get treatment right away. You should get the pills right away that are available, the Paxlovid, and now the supply is getting much better. The treatment is very effective, keeps you out of the hospital, just like the treatment for the flu keeps people out of hospitals today. So the point being, don't wait to go to a doctor to get tested. If you don't have a test, then yes, try to get tested in a clinic somewhere, but go ahead and test yourself at home if you can, and then you can get the medicine. Now, the next question is, how do you get the medicine? I think people know that during the State of the Union, the President announced, and then they've released an effort to do what's called Test and Stay, which is kind of interesting, because it kind of confuses you with school and those things. What it means is, test and treat is really what it means. And what it's saying is, if you get, if you test positive, there are places where you can get the medicine right away. So you would go to a drugstore, you're symptomatic, you would get tested, test is positive, you'd be given the medicine. Vermont probably has no place that's going to fulfill that requirement, because our pharmacies aren't big enough to have doctors or nurse practitioners or physician assistants working there. But hopefully, if you do test positive, we can develop quick ways for you to get the treatment, and it actually works very well. Yes, there are certain people that can't take the medicine because of other medicines they're on, and we can work through those things. If you're not vulnerable, and you get sick, you get a sore throat, you get a cough, you should also test right away, and not necessarily for treatment, because you really don't qualify for treatment, so that you don't get your grandmother sick, or so that you don't get the guy down the street sick, so that you say, oh, I have COVID, I need to stay at home, you know, I don't need to worry about just isolating the heck of myself and being bored, but I shouldn't go out, I should stay at home, I should stay away from my family, let me get five days by, as long as I feel well, I can go back into the community. I don't know if you saw this, but the Department of Health released today, I believe it was this morning, some new guidelines, which actually say, after five days of testing positive, you can return out to the community, and there's no more recommendations on mask use. I think it's a little baloney. I think if you test positive for COVID-19, and after five days you feel great, you can go out in the community, but you should wear a mask, and you should probably not go visit with sick people, or people, sorry, that are vulnerable. I think you should have a little bit of responsibility for the community. So I know if I tested positive, and I was well, I'd stay at home, I'd work, I might go on a walk, not encounter people. When I'm done with that five days, I'm going to test myself, because I can get the test, and if it's positive, I'm going to stay at home again. If it's negative, then I'm going to probably go back out in the community, but I'm going to stay away from people, I'm going to wear a mask, I'm going to do minimal things, until about 10 days goes by, because, you know, that's a socially responsible thing to do. There might not be that much virus anymore, but me contacting someone who could get really sick is just irresponsible. By the way, the reason that they've simplified all those things is just everything's too complicated, and as the prevalence of the virus drops, they think that it's worth the simplicity. So just one more thing on the treatments. There is, there are plenty of treatments, you know, even the last time I spoke here, there were not quite enough treatments. There's two medications you can take by mouth that are available by prescription. There's also IV medication for those who don't qualify for the oral medicine. The oral medicine is much easier to administer and is the preferred way to do it. The trick is, it's highly effective if you take it early, so if you develop symptoms, and then three days later you say, I better go take a test, you go take a test, you get the results, you try to get your doctor, you get your doctor two days later, that just doesn't work. That's not how the medicine's going to be effective. So it's really important, if you get symptoms, you test, and then you get the treatment quickly. And I probably skipped a couple of things, but I'll stop there and see if there's any questions.
Thank you. Yes, Sarah.
So it seems, I've got a question about the treatment. So if you test positive for COVID, you're testing, you don't feel well, you test positive, you're eligible for one of the treatments? It seems to me you'd probably call your primary, but what if you don't have a primary?
Yeah, that's a great question. So I'll back up and say, if you're not in a vulnerable population, you're not really eligible for the treatment. The same thing is actually true with the flu, you know, like, for example, if I tested positive for the flu, I'm not really eligible for the treatment. However, due to pressures on physicians from patients and everyone's desires to get better, people can go get prescriptions for flu, even if they're not really eligible, the same thing will probably happen with COVID-19. I imagine this fall, that if you test positive and you're not a vulnerable population, you could still get a prescription. So I just wanted to clarify that right away. The truth is, you don't need it, and that's why it's not really available. And there are risks of side effects with any medicine, right? So any medicine can have a risk of side effects, including aspirin. And if you don't need the aspirin, then you shouldn't take the aspirin, because you could have a side effect, and the same is true with this. So right now, the best option I can tell you is to go in Vermont, in this area, would be to go to the express clinic at the hospital, so that you could get the prescription, if you really didn't have a doctor anyway. I would love to say that we will develop something that allows people without a doctor or a nurse practitioner to be able to get it over the phone. That would, it's going to take a lot of effort, and I don't anticipate it happening anytime soon. The whole test and treat that the President and that the White House released envisions that every community would have a site like that, and it would be a pharmacy, but right now, there's just not enough, not enough of demand in Vermont for that to happen. I just checked on that this morning, so we're not anticipating. So right now, we go to express care or the emergency department at the hospital.
Great. Other questions? Jim?
Hi, Doctor. Pfizer announced today that they're recommending a booster shot to the booster shot, so a total of four shots. Will that be true for Moderna and some of the others, or, and what's your frank opinion on whether or not a fourth booster would be advisable?
Yes, a little hard. So first off, until the FDA authorizes, I just have to clarify that we can't give that, and somebody's going to want it anyway, and they're going to say their cousin got one in New York, and that's great that their cousin got one in New York, but any person who administers a vaccine or any medicine that's outside of guidelines is susceptible, so that we won't be able to do that. If the FDA authorizes it, we'd certainly be able to do it. I don't, Jim, my personal opinion, I do read a lot, so I have some knowledge there, but it's still only my opinion, is that there's not enough data right now at all to suggest that that's helpful. What they are doing this exclusively on, exclusively, is serum levels of antibodies that they measure in a lab, not actual protection from the virus. So we do have, the one country that did that is Israel, and they gave a fourth shot to those 65 and above, and they showed that, yes, indeed, their antibody levels increased, but of course they increased, that's going to happen. If you come across any disease or any vaccine, your antibody levels are going to increase, and they decrease over time, because they can't remain increased, or else they would accumulate in the blood. So my opinion, Jim, is I want to wait, and I want to see if there's data that says it's effective, and if it is, then we'll do it. I do believe at some point, that we'll become some type of either annual or semi-annual vaccine, and at that point, it'll be pretty obvious.
Okay, second question for you is, and this came from a constituent, and it's unrelated to COVID. As far as Bennington is concerned, do we have an unusually high level of cancer cases than other places in the state or county?
Cancer? Okay. So, no, but I will say-
Any specific kind that's prevalent?
Yeah. So Bennington, the one thing I can think about there, Jim, that goes along with that that's shown in the data is, we have a higher incidence of late-stage lung cancer than would be expected, right, than would be expected for areas. In other words, we have cancers that are popping up at, let's just call it stage three and four, as opposed to one and two. And what that means is, we need to increase surveillance for it. The numbers of cases total are not higher than what would be expected, it's the stage that we're catching at. That could just be due to an unseen variable, but it could just be due to people not coming in and getting screened, or their physicians not screening them, and so we are working on that.
Thank you.
You did remind me of something, though. I knew I forgot something. A week and a half ago, February 28th and March 8th, I got a lot of phone calls, because people were reading the New York Times, and they were looking at the graph for Bennington County, and it showed these huge increases in cases, and those were erroneous, there weren't huge increases in cases in Bennington County. It just was, a bunch of data was released on one day that had not been attributed to any county, so they were old cases, they had accumulated over time, and the State Department, the Department of Health knew that, and so it's not reflected in their graphs, but it was reflected on the New York Times and the CDC websites. The New York Times sort of redacted it in a way, they showed that it was erroneous, that CDC still has not done that. I hope they will, because anybody that looks at that would think we had a high number of cases. But it's not the first place, there's many places that that's happened, where they released the data at one time.
Yes, Jeanne.
I'm just curious, now that we're, it looks like we're moving in a positive direction with COVID, is there a plan for the hospital to close the COVID Resource Center at some point, and if so, you know, what's their, what are they waiting for?
Yeah, no, that's great. So a couple of things. So we have moved vaccinations. The COVID Resource Center does two primary things, test and vaccinate. So vaccination is now moved in the hospital in the express care that I was talking about for those who don't have a doctor, because you can now get vaccinated at your doctor, don't want to go to a pharmacy, they can go to our express care. We're still testing, we're going to try to keep it open as long as possible up to the Resource Center. Back in July of 2021, when cases also fell tremendously, I think the lowest we did was about 13 or 12 tests per day for a while. And I want to keep it open as long as possible, because I'm concerned that in the fall, they'll just come back, not at this level, but the need to get tested will come back. People may not have access to home tests, or they may not trust them as much, and there may just be a reason to have a PCR test. So I imagine, Jeanne, so what we've done, as we've said, we're going to go through April, and then we're going to reassess testing up at the clinic. If the numbers really are so low that it just doesn't make sense to keep it open for anything, then we will stop testing there, but we will be ready to open it right back up as soon as it's needed.
Thank you.
And we had this exact same discussion last summer, which is a little eerie, but it's also not, because last summer we weren't all boosted, we didn't have treatments, we didn't have other things that make it better.
Thanks.
Great. Other questions? Anyone? No? Anyone in the audience have questions for Dr. Dobson? No?
All right, thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Great. Maybe we're moving toward not needing a monthly update.
I know.
I know. We should cross our fingers or knock on wood or something. Okay. All right. Next up, public comment. So let's see. First up is Kelly Carroll. For two items, yes?
I just wanted to invite everyone to the Wollumsack River Walk this Saturday at 10:00 a.m. at People's Park. It's free, it's pet-friendly, it's child-friendly, and it's a great way to open up and start spring and not to jump ahead, it also fits in with the Declaration of Inclusion today, too, so. And then the second thing that I wanted to invite everyone to was, the Bennington American Legion Post 13 is going to have a takeout spaghetti supper on Saturday, March 26. It's $10, and the proceeds are going to go to the Bennington Free Library for a Lego table in the children's section in memory of Emily Hammond. So I just wanted to make sure that everyone knew about that, and everyone is welcome. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Can you, Kelly, so if people are interested in the spaghetti dinner, how do they do that?
If anyone is interested in the spaghetti dinner, the tickets are $10. They can be purchased in advance at the American Legion Post 13 in Bennington, and it has been publicized on Bennington Bulletin, Bennington Bladder, and I believe the Legion is going to put it in the banner as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up, Nancy White.
Nancy White, Bennington. I'd like to know why the Select Board never told the public what our correct tax increase would be if the budget and the agencies passed on the ballot. The only reason I knew our taxes were going to go up 5.2% is because I picked up a town report before the election, and when I called in a town meeting and asked if that 5.2% was correct, I'd forgotten that, Jeannie, you told us in January, the increase was going to be 3.11%. I think if people had known the increase was going to be over 5%, there would have been a lot more discussion, I think more people would have come out to vote. So I'd like to know what you, the Select Board, are going to do to address this problem.
Stuart, I think I'm going to turn this over to you.
Yeah. Yeah, it's actually, I talked with Nancy a little bit before the meeting, it does get confusing. When I talk about the budget in my presentation to the board, and ultimately to the community, I talk about the budget increase, and the overall budget increased 3.4%. That does not relate directly to the tax rate increase. And so in my column and in the annual report, I highlighted the fact that the combined increase for all of the budgets was 4.01%. If the agencies were approved, that moves it up an additional percent. The agencies, I think, on the ballot totaled something like $137,000. That's a penny on the tax rate. So that got us to 5%. And I think, looking, and I told Nancy earlier today, I think looking forward, I'm going to try to be a little bit more careful about throwing percentages out there in the same article, because I think it ends up confusing people and it needn't do that. But when we look at the overall, the overall budget, one year to the next, we have to include the agencies as if they are approved, otherwise we're not comparing apples to apples. So it gets a little tricky and a little confusing, but that's basically what happened.
But this wasn't up to Stu to put out there. He handed you the budget, you either accepted or made the changes. You're his boss, you should have told the public what it was going to be. You told us, I think, 3.11%. When you saw his column with 4%, one of you should have picked it up and called the banner and got the right increase out there.
So Nancy, I think that Stu already answered that, and he explained the difference in the two rates, and I think those are also depending on, that could still change, right? I mean, that's a, that's your best guess.
Yes, the tax rates calculated were calculated based on last year's grand list. So if we see an increase in the grand list of 1%, then you're going to see a decrease in the tax rate of at least a penny. So I mean, that's, that is the problem with trying to look forward 18 months when you're developing a budget in October through January.
And so what the taxpayers are voting on, what the voters are voting on is the budget, and that is what, that is what was on the ballot. So Nancy, I think your point is well-taken. Stu has given us some idea of how he will address it next year, so that it's clear when he's, what percentages he's talking about, so thank you very much.
Jeannie, when you were in the election, you said if the budget and the agencies passed, we'd see a 3-point-something percent increase, not a 5.2% increase, and the public deserved to know that number. I've never heard of voting before in Bennington where we're to know that number. I've never heard of voting before in Bennington where we're told the wrong number, especially if the number is 2% lower than what our taxes are going to go up.
Thank you, Nancy. Next up is Jenny Dewar.
Hi, Jenny Dewar, Powell, the Executive Director of the Better Bennington Corporation. Just wanted to give you a couple of updates. I've spoken to Jeanne about this, but we're going to start bringing some of the downtown merchants to the Select Board regularly to introduce them and put faces to the small businesses that we're trying to support. There's not a parade for St. Patrick's Day. That's been run by various different organizations over time, but with COVID, I guess no one wanted to do that. But the Chamber has created a pub crawl through their young Chamber folk, and there are going to be some buskers downtown. Buskers are musicians or whatever other kind of magicians, entertainment, that go to public places and play for tips, in case anyone doesn't know the term. So there will be some. I'm hoping to do, to invite them to come downtown a lot this summer. Sort of an open invitation, but I also need to run that by the Police Department, how that works, so hopeful. And then finally, the Better Bennington Corporation is doing a promotion called Shop for Shamrocks, which starts Thursday and goes through Sunday. And they look like this. I don't know if you can see them on camera, but if you go and shop at any of our participating shops, then you will receive one of these with your receipt. You can put your name and your phone number and email right on the back of it. There is a QR code if you want to read more about it when you get it. And then there's a jar for you to drop it in at the store, and we'll be doing a raffle on Monday. First prize will be $50 downtown. Second prize, I didn't write these down, I think it's 50, 25, and 10. And downtown dollars are dollars that we create that you can use at any of the downtown stores, and then they come to us for the reimbursement for the money. The participating stores are Scarlet Creation, The Gift Garden, Naps Toys &amp; Hobbies, The Village Chocolate Shop, Dutchman's Tavern, Bringing You Vermont, Dawn's Cutting Edge, Farm Road Brewery, Great Fields Downtown, The Coffee Bar, The Bennington Bookshop, and Meals on Wheels. So please go to those and play. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. Wonderful. All right. So next up is our continued discussion on the Community Policing Advisory and Review Board, or the CPAR. So following the excellent presentation that we had on February 21st, we have had a four-week written comment period, and all of those comments are available in the packet tonight and probably, I'm looking at Jonah, and online?
Is it online tomorrow, or are you just waiting for after the release tonight?
Perfect, perfect. Okay. So that, so you can see those in the packet. I believe there were close to 20 comments that were submitted in writing, which is really wonderful. We also, the Select Board also pulled together some questions for our Town Council, Merrill Bent, around just, you know, what parameters that we were unsure of, sort of what was legal to do. And then, and that also is in the packet. And then late Friday, we received additional information from Merrill regarding what our charter currently provides for. And do you have, did you make some extra copies so that people could get those in the audience?
Yes, I have them here.
Okay. I don't, does anyone on the Select Board need them? Otherwise, I think we can also just share them with the public. I think that was really the intent. So, and then Stu, I can put those out. Stu, did you want to, did you want to-
I'll do it, Jeanne.
Talk, Jeanne, I'll do it.
I'd like to make a request. It's unrelated.
Can you withhold it?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Briefly.
Because I think Stu is, Stu is up to sort of summarize Merrill's memo, since I think most people haven't seen it.
Thank you. Yes, the question, one of the questions that the board put to Merrill had to do with the process and the authority to be given to any new committee, having to do with review of police complaints, and whether or not those committee members had the authority to review in detail personnel issues associated with those complaints. And the basis of Merrill's opinion, which many of you may be seeing for the first time, is Vermont follows what's called the Dillon Rule. We are not a home-rule state. So all of the authority that municipalities have flows from state statute, unlike Massachusetts, which is a home-rule state. So where Massachusetts, specifically Cambridge, we know, has a committee that reviews these complaints. They are able to do that because they are a home-rule state, and they are able to develop individual laws and rules that govern how they act as a city. Here in Vermont, our authority only flows from the state, and currently state law does not authorize a citizen review panel to look at individual personnel issues or to investigate individual personnel issues. That doesn't mean that a task force or a committee created by this board can't review the data trends, can't review perhaps decisions made by the Police Department with regard to complaints, but they can't act. They can only advise the Select Board. They are unable to actually get into the nitty-gritty with regard to the personnel issues involved. And so it takes away some of what I think the task force was looking to do. The statute does not provide that authority at the present time, and our charter does not provide that authority at the present time. Burlington, the City of Burlington has charter language which allows them to create a committee. Brattleboro has charter language which allows them to create a committee, and they've had a committee there for years, but their committee is prohibited from investigating or establishing penalties or personnel. What's the word I'm looking for? Right off my head.
Making determinations.
Well, yeah, they are unable, they are unable to punish the individual or recommend punishments for the individual. Those must remain with the town of Brattleboro. So Vermont is, and has been for a long, long time, very difficult to really create brand-new things on a municipal-by-municipal-by-municipal basis. We really need to work through the state to make sure that the authority comes down Vermont-high, so to speak, before we can actually do some of the things that I think the task force had recommended in their last section about the complaints and how they handle them.
So I think for those of you who have this, the relevant, thank you, thank you, Stu. That was, that was very helpful. I think the most relevant pieces are the paragraph that begins at the bottom of page one and then the following paragraph. So it's really, it's one, two, three. The fourth and fifth paragraphs that lay out what the, what the task force wanted to do specifically on the issue of complaints, and then what, right now, the authority, what that authority is. I did, I did have an opportunity to speak with Brian Corr briefly this afternoon from NACOL, and one, he did not, I mean, while they are, they are a home-rule state, they, he did not feel that what, what is allowed is very different than what Cambridge does, for instance. So I think what we, I think as we go through this, what we're going to have to do, obviously, is get some more information. This was sort of new information for all of us Friday evening. So there are two things that I'm going to suggest. One, I'm going to propose that next steps are that we look at sections one through four, and that we do them section by section. We'll start with Select Board, section one. I'll get all our questions out, and then Audience, section one, get all your questions out, and go through sections one through four in that fashion. And then after we've pulled that information together, I would propose that the Community Policing Work Group, which is Jeanne, Bruce, and me, take that information and do work on sections one through four while also gathering more information on section five. We've just received some information from the Police Department in terms of their process. We're planning to reach out to the AG's office tomorrow to talk with Julio Thompson about what other review boards have done, and also about the training that he is preparing and how that fits. But, you know, so we'll move forward and, you know, we'll figure out what the parameters are and what we need to do. We also reached out to our legislative delegation because both Senator Sears and Campion have been interested in this, as well as Representatives Wetman and Nygro. So we forwarded the memo to them as well, and they've asked that as we move through the process that we share with them what we learn. Okay? So that's, that's where we are on that. So it changes the landscape a little bit, but it's unclear right now how much it changes the landscape, quite honestly. So-
Now, Chair?
Yeah.
Can I just add one more thing to the-
Absolutely.
Good. I know that I'll have plenty of time to chime in, but given the fact that the Select Board has acted in some sense of a review of that, of complaint, of the complaint process, I'm a little confused as to how Merrill's letter memo refers to our current practice, since our current practice is still in force. I'm assuming if there's a complaint made against the police officer, our actions, our role has been, at least in the past, not to do the investigation, but to review the results of the investigation.
Exactly.
And does that, has that now been changed by Merrill's letter?
No, and in fact, no, it is not. So, I mean, without, I think, without getting in the weeds-
So now I totally, yes, I don't want to get in the weeds.
Because the Select Board and the Town Manager have that authority, but we do not have the authority to grant another organization that authority. That's sort of where we are. But I think-
Okay, I can, I can-
That's small weeds.
Put that on a van, but I'm, that's still my issue.
Okay. Well, I mean, it doesn't need to be an issue. I think the follow-up, I think, yeah. Okay, I think-
Just to clarify-
Yeah, go ahead.
The statutes, the statutes give Select Boards authority over personnel issues, especially in communities where there are no administrative positions available. So the Select Board is actually the employer. Where you have a Town Manager form of government in general, and this is not always true, but that authority then is given to the Town Manager via charter to handle those things. So yes, the Select Board has that authority to review complaints, as does the Town Manager, because both, in some cases in Vermont, will have the necessity to do so.
Okay. Jim, I just want to go back. Is what you need to share, can that wait, or is that something that needs to be shared?
I'd like to share. I'll be brief, and I wonder if we can skip over to past collections, if we can-
Oh, no. No, we actually can't. So I'm sorry. We'll, okay, because we're in the middle of this one. Sorry. And we would need to rearrange at the beginning. Okay. So is the, is the process that I'm proposing, is that okay for folks to go section by section right now, and then have the Community Police Group, policing group, follow up on pulling this together and also on section five? Okay, all right. So then let's do that. So what I'd like to do is start with section one, and what I'm thinking is whoever asks the first question, we're just going to go down the row from there, and if you don't have a question, you can pass. We'll go around a second time if you have a question later on, but just, just to keep it simple. Does anyone else need one?
I didn't bring mine either. Okay, I'll share with Jeanne.
Okay. Oh, so actually, what I have is-
I may have another one.
This is a clean copy, so you can take that. I have it marked up.
Okay.
Okay, I was going to just, but actually Nancy takes notes for us, so I don't need to do that. Oh my gosh, I forgot to even introduce Stu Hurd, our Town Manager, Nancy Lively. Heavens! And Jim Vires on CAT TV. Heavens. I am so sorry, guys. Okay, so let's start with section one. Anyone on the board have any comments or questions on just section one? Bruce, you're starting us off? Okay, go.
Might as well. My, my question slash concern is at three, where we talk about building accountability, and it's the way in which it's written, maybe it's, I think it was intended that the CPAR would eventually be developing a clear process and timetable for reviewing any number of things. And my sense would be that this board needs to set that timetable before, because I think this needs to be as clear as possible going for a person who is going in to become a member of this board. They would want to have that, and we're the only body that's really accountable to the people, so I think we really need to be setting that timetable. And I'm not sure whether this is even relevant, depending on how we end up on number five, but nonetheless.
Okay, so that would be for three A and B?
Yeah, I think so. Yep.
Okay. All right. Sarah, do you have any questions right now on section one?
No, I'm still wrapping my mind around everything from last.
Okay.
Excuse me, Jeanne, I don't think I have section one. I have questions from Merrill.
No, so this is, oh, you know what? You probably don't have a copy of it. It's from last meeting.
Oh, yeah.
Do you have a copy, then?
Yes.
Okay.
I have too many copies.
Okay. Gary, do you have any questions or comments on section one? Tom?
Yeah. Under number three, if we're talking about the CPAR itself here, I think we should strike, we could strike the "and investigating" section, because the rest of this document seems to talk about review.
Okay. Jim, how about you? Okay, okay. Let's see. Jeanne, you?
I just have one right now. It's in section one, letter C, "by conducting reviews free from any external influences." I guess I'm just trying to wrap my brain around. I understand, you know, the board wants to be completely independent, but I'm wondering if that's actually attainable.
Okay. Okay. Great. And then, let's see. The only thing I had in one was under three. It feels to me, and I guess this is something that I, reviewing data and data analysis really matter to me, and I guess I would like to add a C. That would be analyzing data for, or reviewing data to determine trends. So something under accountability, because it feels to me like the data review really is what makes us accountable. All right. Anything else on section one, now that we've gone through it once, for Select Board? Section one, public comment. Anything in section one that people want to address? Yes, please. All right, and so, tell us what number in Section One, please.
I didn't, it's not a specific number, it's just in general.
Oh, so, Rose, we can do that later, but right now, we're going section by section. So, Section One, do you have any specific comments that you'd like to make?
I guess not.
Okay. Okay. All right, so let's move on to Section Two. Anyone have a question or comment on Section Two? Who wants to start us off on the Select Board? Bruce!
I'm always happy to... Under, partly, under two, at the very least, two F, I think what needs, among what needs to be stricken is interviewing witnesses.
Okay.
There may be other things there that need to be stricken.
Okay.
But I don't think, I know that Merrill's memo would strike that, but nonetheless, I think there's other parts of interviewing, even if one was a reviewing. And then, the section under, and I don't really know quite what to do with this, but the section under five, which I think is important...
The community relations?
Yeah, there's an existing policy about that, and at the very least, that needs to be referenced, and it may very well supersede, but, but I can see where this Board might participate in that process. So, I would just, at the very least, like to see some relationship to the existing policy.
Okay, and that policy...
Is on community rela...
It's called community...
It's called community relations.
Okay.
I am pretty sure.
Okay.
Is it collaboration?
It could be, yeah, I'd have to go back and see what the actual name is, but...
Okay, oh, okay.
It could be collaboration, yes.
Perfect, okay. All right. Sarah?
Yeah, my voice is in and out now again, so, are we able to send this to council and just...
We already have, that's...
This document, see what we should strike?
We already have.
And see specific...
So, what will hap, so, what, what, what we are doing now is going through and noting
Right, understood.
Our changes, and then what will happen is, once we reformat, reformulate this based on what we think, it will go back to Merrill.
Okay, but are we able to see, ask her what specifically we should strike?
We did, yes, so those were the questions that we asked Merrill to begin with, yeah.
Okay, so then, another document coming back with specifics, did not come back yet?
It did. Mm-hmm. Yeah, so, yes, so, for right now, I don't, so, what we will, so, so what we're proposing is that the Community Policing Group will go back and put something together, that'll go to Merrill again, as well as we're talking with the AG's office, you know. So, I think right now, all we're doing is trying to get our sense of what the, what the CPARB should, what these elements should include.
Right.
So, this is, these are the task force recommendations, and so now, what we're doing is responding to those based on what we got in the, from Merrill already, and what we've gotten from the public in terms of community input, as well as the presentation that the task force, you know, has done for us.
Yeah, that makes sense, I guess, just, I'm just clarifying myself, I guess, a document with her maybe just striking out, like, this doesn't look, just...
Well, this isn't what the final document will look like, so she did that, she essentially did that already, by, in broad strokes.
Right.
So, I think right now, if there's anything in two that particularly stands out to you that you either think is, you know, the cat's meow, or something that we should rethink, I think that's, that's what we're doing right now.
No, I...
But not to worry, yeah.
I guess, you know, I'd like to have everyone that gave us this document have the most say, and just have things, he's leaving, just a second.
That's moving.
Have things that are there that we, that can do, that then come back and look at it and have our, that, okay, that's, it's gone.
We have a pretty good idea of that now, so if there's, yeah, so if there is anything, I think just share, yeah. Okay. Gary?
Under the Complaints, oops, sorry. Under the Complaints section, should we put in something about the law that is required?
Yes. So, yes, so the, the two, so two, two will definitely get reformatted, will get reformulated based on, yeah, what Merrill tells us is, is possible.
And reference that law.
Okay, thank you, all right. Um, are you right there? Tom?
Not just...
Okay. How about you, Jim?
The only thing that I found objectionable, I think Bruce already cited it, was Letter F on complaints and compliments and striking, interviewing witnesses.
Okay. Jean, anything?
Uh, yeah, not, um, two, Section Two, number two, Letter E on the bottom of page two. I think I'm uncomfortable with the Town Communication Coordinator being available to assist people that want to make complaints. It just seems to be outside of the role of that position. It would seem to me that the Board itself could assist a person who needed assistance in filing a complaint. So, I guess that's my, that's my comment on that.
Okay, all right, and that, that's two E?
Two E, yeah.
Okay.
Bottom of page two.
All right, okay, all right. Perfect. Um, all right, let's see, I had a couple of things, two, um, maybe this is a, this is, well, this is a philosophical piece, but the Section Two at the top is the statement of sort of a purpose for Section Two, and the last sentence says, "The task is to ensure the fair and equitable police work within our community through the following recommendations." And I, I wonder if really what we're trying to do, for me, it feels more like the task is to ensure the safety and equity of the community through the following recommendations. So, that, that's something that I would want us to, I think, think about. Other things, under Policies and Procedures, which is number two, three, I think, again, I don't see it in here, I think adding, evaluate existing policies to determine which policies need revision and, and what needs to be added, so just sort of an overview piece feels important. And then, I think, the other thing, oh, the other thing, under number four, which is data collection, it feels important for the CPARB to also be, to identify and utilize community policing data from other communities, as well as statewide efforts. So, I just want to make sure that we're not looking entirely internally, but also looking more broadly in the community.
Uh-huh.
And then, I think, oh, and the la, the last thing, I think, the, under Community Relations, number five, it's sort of embedded in here, but I would, I would think that we would want an annual, a report annually to the Select Board and to the community on trends, needs, opportunities within the Bennington Police Department and the community, so that there is sort of, in the same way that the Energy Committee is doing that, would want this committee to be doing.
Yeah.
Other, anything else from Select Board? Yeah, okay.
But, Ken, I guess I'm just making an assumption here, and I said it earlier, and I continually confuse myself, so we're probably confusing everyone. When, when we're talking, when we're saying "the Board," I think people could easily be confused that we're talking about us in some instances, rather than CPARB. So, I just think when we're going through the document, we need to really make sure that we use CPARB and Select Board, so it's very clear.
Okay.
I just said "the Board," and I was thinking, which Board was I talking about, and I meant the CPARB Board.
Okay.
Yeah. Anyway, just kind of a general comment.
Okay, good note. Questions, Nancy?
Under Section One, E, F, and G, I'm not sure if I'm reading this right.
Section One or Section Two?
Section Training.
Yes, oh, Section Two...
I'm sorry, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, under number one, yeah.
Am I reading this correctly, that it's money from our budget that will be used for training for various groups and organizations? Or are you not to that, are we not to that place yet?
Oh, wait, so, one, which, which one are you looking at, under one?
Budget recommendations for CPARB's expenses for training. I can understand that for CPARB and the Police Department, but are you talking about budget money for groups and organizations in Bennington? Okay, that's what I didn't know. And under complaints, I think Jonah is the perfect person to take the complaints. He's our information guy. I worry that the more people and groups you get involved taking complaints, the bigger the chances to lose the complaints, or for the person not to get all the details. I think Jonah, if he was the person who was going to be doing it all the time, you know, you would know it'd be accurate, and they'd get right over to the Police Department, so I would say our town information guy would be the person to, to be helping out with complaints.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments from the audience? Nope. All right, moving right along to Section Three, which is the composition of the CPARB. Questions, comments on this from the Select Board? Bruce!
Surprise. Um, under qualifications?
Yes.
Uh, I'm, I'm going to feel much better if we actually define what we mean by a long-term, long-time relationship with the town of Bennington, with some specificity. So, that's two, and under three E, I think there is a better way to write and, and meet the intent of the committee, a clearer way, or perhaps even a way that, that if the Chair of the CPARB, in their opinion, thinks a member is not meeting the qualifications, including attendance, that the Chair writes to the Select Board, and the Select Board writes to the person saying you are no longer on CPARB. I, there's a number of different...
So, you're looking for a process, is that...
I'm looking for a process and much greater clarity.
Yeah, okay.
Because "will be considered as resigning" sounds too, too backwards to me.
Okay, all right, but, but the intent is there, so...
Yeah, I wanted, exactly...
Are you comfortable with 75%?
Uh, that you must attend, yeah, I am.
Okay. Okay, all right, so, okay.
Those are mine, at the moment.
Okay, perfect, okay. Sarah, any comments? Gary?
The only question I had is based upon one of the, the comments by the public, of number of members, and they were suggesting more was better because of larger cross-sections, so I don't know if seven makes sense, rather than five, if that's the right number, but...
Mm-hmm, okay, and so, what, are you, are you recommending seven to nine?
I would say seven, yeah. Seven ought to be a minimum.
Okay. Okay, all right. How about you, Tom?
Um, yeah, it just occurred to me just now, that 75% of meetings number, starting when? You know, and...
Okay, back to the specificity piece, okay, okay.
You know what I mean, because 75% of four meetings is three, you know, and so on.
Oh, you mean like over a year's period?
Right, yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah, because, but, you know, if there's, if there's chronic absenteeism, we may not want to wait a whole year to determine whether they should be replaced, or...
Precisely.
So, I'm just curious, but we need to, I just think we need to reword that somewhere.
Yeah, yeah, and it, and it may be that our Town HR Director can help us with some language around that, too, which is pretty helpful. Okay, anything else?
I'm, I was, I'm kind of, I'm comfortable with the five to seven members. I think the more members we get, just, it's going to make for, for, for more complications later on, but, I mean, I can see the arguments either way, but I'm, I'm comfortable with the five to seven, myself.
Jim, how about you?
Yeah, with qualifications, kind of, sometimes wasn't an ideal, the resident of the town of Bennington, a long-time relationship with Bennington, that last clause, that's on the...
Okay, so, so it seems like things that are coming up in this section, that we, we are not all of a mind, or like somewhat unclear about our number of, of CPARB members, and who, and what it means to be a long-time, be in a long-time relationship with Bennington?
It sounds too peculiar to me.
Um...
The loose connection to determining the strong...
Yep, and then, the other, the other might be the length of term as well. I, I will say that I'm, I personally would be more comfortable with either a two- or three-year term, rather than a three-to-a-four-year term. Four years is a lifetime. Uh, just, our terms are three years, and those are, those are long terms. It's a, yeah, so I, so that, for me, that feels like a question as well.
Yeah.
Uh, are there, where are people on that? Where, so, I don't know, should, can we do sort of a show of hands, like five to, who's, or just five to seven, seven to nine? Where, where are you on there?
On the number?
Yeah.
Okay.
Jean, where are you, five...
Seven to nine.
Okay. How about you?
Five to seven.
Oh, goodie. This is gonna be fun. Sarah, where are you?
Um, Jean, is that good?
Five to seven, or seven to nine, number numbers?
Five, five, I'm five, I'm three, five, seven, I'm, I'm...
Okay, okay, oh, goodie, now we're, we're one to one to one.
I have a ten-point mark for eight.
Okay, Gary, where are you?
I'm at definite seven.
Not nine? You went to seven? Okay, I don't know why we're doing, okay, Tom, where are you on this?
I'm at five to seven.
You're at five to seven?
Yep.
How about you?
Five to seven.
Five to seven, well, and I am seven to nine, but right now, five to seven seems to have it with the seven, with the seven going with the five to seven, and I'm okay with...
We can find nine, three, seven, three, five, five, three, so I'm five, I...
Okay, so it seems like, seven seems like our magic number, okay, I'm okay with that. All right, okay, so, long-time Bennington, what, that term, whatever it is, um...
Strong, long-term relation, or long-time relationship with...
So, I don't know if there's anyone from the CPARB, from the task force that would like to maybe clarify the thinking, sure, come on up, Clark. like to maybe clarify the thinking, sure, come on up, Clark.
That guy.
Good evening, Clark Adams, resident of Bennington, and as mentioned, the previous part of the committee that put together the proposal. I, actually, I've, I will claim credit for that term, long-term relationship, because there was a lot of discussion back and forth within the group. You know, a classic example is one of the members of our group is, was a minister in town here for eons, but lives in Powell. You know, but he's very involved with the community. From what I understand, the chief of police was probably pretty darn involved with the community, lives in Shasberry. So, using that logic, somebody who works here in this town, long-term, has very close relationships within the community, and entities within the community is what I think we were targeting. Okay, and if I can, you know, slide into another area that you touched on, in terms of numbers, our main concern was, can we, how many people can we get? You know, if, we were really concerned that the community response and turnout might not generate seven to nine people. You know, of course, we're always open for more, if you fill up a room with people who want to serve, that's wonderful, but we were trying to be a little more realistic with our expectations. And, you know, one of the things that we thought made lower expectations was the terms. You know, you're asking people to spend a considerable amount of time and effort over long-term, you're not going to find, in my opinion, I could be wrong, you're going to find seven to nine people who are ready to spend four years in dealing with some very divisive and demanding circumstance. So, that, that's just my input on those issues.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you very much.
Sure.
All right, so we'll work on language, but are we comfortable with the intent of that?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, and then, numbers of years?
I'm not sure I'm comfortable with the language.
Okay.
I mean, I think if it's someone who lives in the town, or someone who works in the town, is different than just a long-term relationship.
Okay.
I mean, I think that has to be tighter language than...
All right, so, could people, so, would, could people live with, live or work? What about long, what about people that are retired, but, you know, do volunteer work, like daily in Bennington? With significant community involvement?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, there's a way to write this, giving some examples that would be, that would make it clearer, and would define it in a way, and Gary, I, as a retired person, I would think a person who is retired, but li, and lives on the Powell line, or in Powell, or up in Shasberry, but, let's say, volunteers at Givix, you know, two or three or four times a week, I think that person has committed themselves to being in Bennington. That's my, that's why I would say, there has to be some of that connection. I just think that this language was more loosey-goosey than I was comfortable with, that's all, but the intent, I'm okay with.
Jean, did you have?
And I'm assuming that everyone, regardless of whether they have a longtime relationship with Bennington, would have to be a Vermont resident. So could it be someone who lives in Housick Falls, or Williamstown, or another neighboring community that, over the state line, a state line, would serve? Because that's, that's a possibility, that that could happen.
Stuart, so for those, for those boards that we have, that are not exclusively Bennington residents, do they allow cross-border?
No.
It is just Vermonters?
It's Bennington residents.
No, 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 we have some boards that are regional, that are not just Bennington residents. Historic preservation, maybe, what, there are some that are, that are, that are...
Well, yeah, the historic preservation, but you have to be, you have to hold a certain position in order to be on that board, so you have to be an architect, or you have to be someone who is involved in historic preservation, or you have to, there, it's very specific by ordinance what you have to, what your background has to be in order to be appointed.
Okay, but they're, but they're all Vermont...
So that opens, that does broaden it.
But it, but they're all Vermont residents?
I believe everybody that sits is a Vermont resident.
All right, so we can double, that, that's another...
That's easy.
My, so, that's another mayoral question, because she said you didn't have to be a Bennington resident.
Right.
But we didn't ask the question whether you need to be a Vermont resident.
I would prefer that, for sure.
I mean, I guess we, I mean, I guess we could, we could just say that, too, if that's our...
Yeah, I mean, we, I think we can say that, and I...
I would personally prefer that.
Okay, so are we now leaning toward live and work, or have, or significant community involvement? Or we...
I'd like us not to worry about wordsmithing it here.
No, I'm just saying, I'm just trying to get the sense of it.
Oh, the sense of it.
And be a Vermont resident.
Yes.
Yeah, those are the, those are the key points, yes, we're not wordsmithing here.
Right, good.
Stop me, yeah, okay, so the third issue there was term.
Length of term, you mean?
Yeah, length of term, which I would, I would really encourage us to think about two to three years rather than three to four years terms, this just seemed really long.
Jean?
Yeah?
I actually suggested to the committee at that time that four years would be the minimum, simply, simply because of the training that you're going to be asking these people to get in order to be a member of this committee. That's going to take, that's going to take a ton of time early on, and, so if you have a two-year term, they get trained and they're off, they're gone.
All right, well...
You start all over again.
Okay, so we will pursue that more, that does not seem like the training is the length of the, that anyone is proposing training that's the length of the term.
Well, not, well, I would hope everybody, it's a constant learning...
Constant learning, but not, yeah, not...
But there is, there, initially, the talk of the training is, there's a, there's a lot of training upfront that the members will receive.
There is, there is.
Yep.
And I think the most I've heard is, like, is three to six months, like, six months being the extreme, more like two to six, so I, I don't know, I, I just think four years is too long, I don't know. Where are people on that?
I, I agree, four years is, is a very, very long time, and I worry about people not coming forward to put in an application, or whatever we're going to call it, because of that. Wow, yeah. I've been on school boards and this board, and three years is a really long time. I mean, four years is a really long time.
Mm-hmm.
So is three.
So is three, but four is even worse.
Where are you on this, Bruce?
I am, however, though...
Oh, let her finish.
I am, I am very in favor of term limits for this particular board, I think that's a really good idea.
Okay, we'll go term limits next, all right, so, number of years on the board?
Yeah, well, I, I think we should make sure that there's a limit on that, and I'm comfortable with three-year terms. I think it can be done in three-year terms, I have some other issues when, in the next section, when it comes to all that stuff, but a three-year term seems normal and nominal, and once the entire team is trained, the entire group, then it's really only at most a third going off and needing to be trained.
Well, except that, that it, so if we do two to three years in the first year, it means that we have some turnover, if everybody's three years, it means the whole board turns over.
No, I, I'm actually thinking, as I recall, there was a section, section about, you know, making, creating it so that it's not, everybody goes off all at once.
Well, that's only, that's only possible if they're different year terms.
That's, when they say three or four...
Well, I, I understand that, I think you can actually do it at the beginning of an organization, so that there's a group with one, a group with two, and a group with three.
That's what we're talking about, Bruce, right?
And I understand that, I'm just trying to say, for me, the maximum ought to be three, and then you, then you can decide to go over it.
Okay.
If that's, but, but that there will be at the beginning, just, just for that time, ones and twos and threes, people who are there, who are probably, I'm going to assume, will want to re-up after their first year, but we want to get them into classes, that's, that's my point.
All right, so you're a one, two, and three?
Yeah. Just initially.
Just initially, okay, I'm only a two, three.
Just initially, and then after that, it's a three.
Because of the training, because of the training.
That's how, that's how we did it at the CDC, that's how lots of boards have done it.
That was the intention. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so Sarah, where are you on that?
Looking at the initial training?
No, we're looking at the, no, all we're doing is looking at the term, eleven, two or three, two, one, two, three.
She's in the middle, she's got that.
Yeah.
So, with the initial training, I'm not really sure what initial training is actually going to be able to happen, so I'm thinking right now, that, that the training, from what you mentioned, may just be, or the, the limit may be able to just be a three year, but I think that, just revisiting what training maybe will happen, maybe twenty, I can't be on that.
Okay, and we should, I think, in talking with Julia Thompson tomorrow, hopefully we'll get a better sense of that.
Yeah.
He's apparently coordinating training for the state, so, okay, okay, so, yeah, so where we are right now. Gary, where are you?
I agree with Bruce about the rotation on the, on the board, and I agree with Sarah that it depends, if it takes a year to train somebody to be effective on this board, it would, it would be a bad thing to have them then move off the board after they just got trained.
Okay, all right, so, okay, and Tom?
Yeah, I mean, initially, it seemed to me like we were forgetting the word "initial" was part of this, but yeah, obviously, we need to have different term limits so we can get these into staggered rotations, but I think the overall term of three years is reasonable. Do we want to talk term limits yet, or is that next?
Oh, no, go, go ahead.
I think we need to, I, I do agree that there should be limits, but I think rather than number of years, we should just call it number of full terms.
Right.
You know, no more than two terms, no more than three terms, something like that.
Right.
Okay, all right. All right, where are you on this, Jim?
Question for Stu. What would be the expected length of training that they'd have to go through, any idea?
No idea.
Okay.
So, what we've gotten from Nicole, and what we've gotten from other boards, is that it's less than six months.
Okay, and is that full-time, or, you know, over what span of time?
Over six.
Once a week?
To do everything from ride-alongs to meetings to, that's what I'm saying, is that it's somewhere between two and six months is what we're hearing.
But the, you still haven't answered my question, the frequency with, with...
Yes, that would matter, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, so what we're, so, assuming, assuming that, whatever that frequency is, that the training is done within six months, where would you, where would you be on number of years on the board? Is, are you comfortable with three, or...
I'd be opposed to any term limits on this, as Stu can rightly point out to you, we have vacancies in various voluntary positions for the town, and they've been vacant for years, right?
We've had a number of vacancies on a couple of our boards that have been continuous, yes.
And I fear that, you know, we, this, this is not outside the realm of possibility with this, and to limit that, that, that term, I think is a wrong idea. You know, if somebody doesn't want to serve for three years, that's fine, if they don't want to serve for one year, and, you know, they, they decide to resign, you know, nobody's chaining them to a table to stay on that, on that board, but I, I would go initially with three-year terms, and then scratch the, the term limits. You'd be, with the limitations of turn, terms, you're losing valuable information and experience that that board member would, would have during their length of turn, office, and beyond that. I think it would be absolutely foolish to get rid of them after one term, and it would be at a considerable more expense to the town of Bennington to pay for it.
Okay, all right, any other thoughts on that? Sarah?
I tend to agree with Jim on that.
Okay. All right, so, all right...
Jean, do we, Jean, do we have a...
Well, hang on, hang on one second, okay, and then, anybody else on select board have anything more that they want to say, either on numbers of people, or terms, or term limits? All right, so, let's open it up for that, as well as anything else on section three.
Again, Clark Adams. The discussions that we put into this document on the ideas of term limits, one of the things we really were stressing is how we wanted this to be a kind of a dynamic group. We didn't want, what I heard, and as I interviewed people in the community, there's a large number of people in this town who say that there's this machine, this status quo, group of people who run everything, and nobody else has any say in it. So we did not want to establish a hierarchy, you know, we're, we're the authority on the way things should be done in the PD, or whatever, so that, that was the mindset behind that. You know, we also pondered the idea, as was mentioned, sliding appointments, you know, the first group of people are appointed incrementally, and I think the numbers we came up with was a group, I think we had five, maybe two people would be two years, and the balance would be three. And we still had issues, again, we talk about training, and how much effort's going to go into making this work, we weren't quite certain what resources were going to be available, and I understand the state, the AG's office is looking at putting together a training package that is appropriate for the entire state, speaking to the gentleman from the PD who was on our committee, some of the internal training they're doing, the idea of everything from ride-alongs, to even just us sitting in the back of the room while they're doing their required annual training to get a feel for it, so, in terms of the question, how long's the training, well, if we'd like to learn how they deal with use of force, or whatever, I don't think they do that every month, so the training may be twice a year, and if we miss one, you may have to wait another six, seven months to the other, so, this, this whole process is not, it's not easy, you know, the proverbial sausage-making here, so...
I'd like to offer a little perspective for you, with, to you...
Oh, I, it sounds like you're coming from behind me, speaking, you forget me?
I guess I could kind of freak out. With respect to the, the idea that, you know, a group of people runs it like a cabal is a load, it's just a load.
I, I didn't, that word you said, I honestly didn't hear what you said, is a what?
I think it's a load.
So, it's okay, I think you know...
I can agree.
I want to finish my point, please, thank you. What we have a hard time is getting people to apply to these boards, and, you know, if there, if there's a specific tenure, they can reapply, we've had that in historic preservation over the years, and, Dan, what's a board that you sit on with Charlie Cobb? Right, and we have infrequent vacancies, but we still do, but those people, many of them, decide to run again, but they don't have to, either, and the, the underlying point that I want to make here is getting people to, to apply for these positions, it ain't easy.
Absolutely, I, I think if, my previous presentation, I said, we were looking at numbers, even this week in the last meeting, we didn't really think, you know, the idea of finding people is going to be difficult, I acknowledge that, but I also, when I, my comment, I said, in the interviews we on the committee did, we went out, met with different groups of people, now, that's something I heard, I didn't say it was a fact, there are people in this town who perceive this, and unfortunately, small town, perception is reality, and when the whispering campaign gets going, neither you nor I, anyone in this room can change it. So, we're coming up with a new committee, and by showing the community an openness that we're willing to make changes, and be willing to adapt to what the community perceives, I thought would be a positive circumstance. Now, the idea we can make announcements that there's vacancies and so forth coming up, and again, one of the things I saw with some other documentation, we can prove, well, for six months, we put out solicitation for people to come and fill these positions and to help us, and if we don't get these responses, then what do we do? We move down another path... We move down another pathway to take care of it. So, when and if someone comes to you or you hear the voices like, nobody does anything, nobody's here to help. Well, I've got a piece of paper here that says, for six months, we solicited to get this done, and we never got any responses. But I think the most important thing about this committee is the community needs to see that there's an openness and a willingness to do things differently and new and involve them. Because, you know, one of the things that irks me and why I volunteer it is, I hear these terrible things about racist Bennington or insensitive Bennington. You know, I've lived all over the world in my military service. I chose to come to Bennington because guess what? It's a damn fine community. I would come up here and meet people. I've had nothing but positive experiences over the past eight or nine years when I'd come around Bennington. So, I want to give the naysayers, put up or shut up. So, you've got opportunities to sit on this committee, you don't show up, that's your choice. But I personally don't want this town painted in a negative sense by the whispering campaign. And we have to give them a chance, put up or shut up. Keep a record, we asked for help, we didn't get any help, these people were willing to help, we're going to stick with them.
Clark, could I, before you sit down, and this is for anyone, this is task force members or anyone else in the community that wants to comment on it. The, the task force did recommend term limits.
Absolutely, yes.
And, and I'm, and from what you just said, it sounds like the reason was because you wanted to involve as many people in the community as possible so that it wasn't the first seven people that get on the board or there for the next two centuries.
Absolutely.
You know, I, if there are, I, which I think is really important for us to hear, that term limits matter to the task force. I think, you know, if you have anything else to say on that, or if other people that are on the task force would like to speak to that, I think that, that's really helpful to us because I think it's a place where we're struggling.
Sure.
Yep.
Hi, I'm Lynn Mazza, I was on the CPAR, or I was on the task force as well. The intent around term limits was exactly as you say, Jeannie, was to get as many different folks involved as possible, hear as many different voices as we could. But to Jim's point, maybe we can compromise and put wording in there saying, here's the term limit, but if there's a lack of applicants, people can reapply. And, and that addresses, you know, best of both worlds.
Interesting.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm just wondering if changing it to seven to nine or five to nine gives us the opportunity to get rid of the term limits and have more people on the board so that, so that there's more opportunity for different voices, more people moving on and off the board?
Anyone from the task force or a community that want to respond to that?
My sense is that regardless of the number of people on the board, I think term limits, again, just because you don't want the same person in there for decades and decades and decades, is really, that's what it comes down to, is the sense that we, like Clark said, we don't, we don't want the feeling that there's a few people who are totally monopolizing the process. And if, if you don't have term limits, that could happen.
Thank you.
Yeah.
This is not really about term limits, it's more about the effectiveness of, if we started out with staggered terms. I don't believe that a member of the CPAR, if they're not fully trained, they still wouldn't have value. Like, I, I get the feeling that we're sort of assuming that until they're fully trained, they're not really going to be up to speed and be able to participate as, as maybe robustly as they would. And I, I don't think that that's true. I think it'd be great, but to have a person sit on the board for two years, maybe one year, I'm not sure about that, but two years, I, I think that person would be perfectly capable of being a very effective member, regardless of possibly missing out on some of the trainings that are not offered on a regular basis.
We may want to hold that to section four because I think that, that comes up.
Okay.
Because there is, there are some assumptions from the task force about training prior to participation, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah, so, anything else on section three?
For public or for board?
For either, I think, at this point, yeah, go ahead.
So, so are we intending for this to be a living document and revisit this at some point?
All of our documents are living documents.
Yes, yes, but I mean, are you like in five years or?
Oh, yeah.
I, I really liked the comments, thank you.
That's a good point.
I, my mind has been chained, I think that with the lack of applicants, if there's a lack of applicants, excuse me, voice is still in flux, I like that, I think that's a great idea. I think, yeah, I think that's great, I would like to.
Yep, okay. And Sarah, I'm adding also just your comment that we may want to come up with this document that will be reviewed every three years or, you know, however many years.
I think since it's very new, I think that maybe revisiting it maybe in two or three years would be ideal.
Okay.
I have one, I have one more comment. As far as term limits, I know some organizations, there are term limits in place. A person who wants to remain can rotate off for a year or two and then reapply. So, we may want to add language, that doesn't mean you could never serve again, but you need to take a, a break.
Yeah, okay, so that's another alternative.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, okay.
It does say that in there.
Oh, it does, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Well, it's a good idea. Okay, there you go.
They already thought of it.
All right, I'm starring it, okay.
Oh, yeah, here it is, I'm sorry, I didn't read that far.
All right, we allotted a half an hour for this entire process.
Yeah, so we're going to get to section four.
And we're, we're well over an hour.
Well, no, we allotted to 7:30, I think, and?
No, it says 6:30 to 7:00.
Oh, well, there we go.
But we didn't start at 6:30.
So, section, so, section four, which is the last section we're taking up tonight. So, select board, comments on that?
Of course.
Bruce?
I would add to their list of training, but knowing that we're going to meet with Julio. But public records law is, it seems to me, also an important place to add to that list. So, that's what I had at I. I'm hopeful that we, that these folks can be trained or receive initial training, initial training, within six months. I am not as optimistic as my colleague. I actually think, depending upon what tasks we give this board, when we're, or that we're able to give this board, and I don't know the answer to that question yet. But if we were to give them the full gamut of what the task force gave them, I would not want them doing the review of a, you know, even though I understand, let's just setting Merrill's memo aside.
Right, yep.
I would not want them doing that portion of the task until they've been trained and that they have certified that they have been trained. I want them to be able to say on a document, I believe I have been trained in all of these items.
So, maybe they would be able to do some pieces, not all?
Some pieces, but not all. I think it's, it's really critical. And part of that is the requirements around, when we're talking about people's jobs, we need to be exceptionally careful. We have to be cleaner than Caesar's wife on that. Secondly, on removal, I think we need to particularly, this harkens back to attendance, but there may be other things that might require removal. I think we need to be a little bit more explicit about how that might work, whether it's a, a vote, a majority vote to recommend removal to, to the select board. That might be something, but I think we have to be more explicit than that. With regard to compensation equal to what the select board gets, that, can I say, I'd hate, I've heard this already, so it's not mine entirely, but I'll agree with that. I would not want to offend them with that amount of money.
The dollar twenty-five an hour?
Yeah, something like that. I realize the intent of the task force, we don't compensate anybody else. And it would be, I would have a hard time going to my colleagues on the Energy Committee and saying, oh, by the way, they're going to get paid this, but you're not. That would, to me, would have, I would have a problem with that. I think, aside from other, some other editing things, those are my comments on section four.
Okay, great, thank you, Sarah?
Anything that I really had to comment on is from legal and probably anything that is coming from gentlemen tomorrow.
Okay. Gary?
I think I agree on the compensation, the volunteer basis of the, the board, and again, the investigation piece of it.
Okay. Tom?
Yeah, in part two C here, talks about training and other areas recommended by the board, the chief of the police. I think that, that language needs to be firmed up. Because at the beginning here, it says they will participate in that training. We can't just have people adding trainings.
So, what are you saying?
At random, I'm not sure how to solve that yet, I just identified the problem.
Okay, 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 okay.
But, yeah.
Okay.
I'm with Bruce on the compensation pack. I, I understand the reasons behind that, I just don't, I don't know that we can justify it with, with our other boards. And Bruce talked about public record law.
I did.
Yeah, I think, I think that's what I had.
Okay, Jim? Okay, okay, all right. The only, the only other thing I had, that's already been mentioned, is really thinking about a staff liaison to the group. We don't have any boards or commissions, I believe, that don't have some kind of staff or select board liaison. And that's mainly just to make sure that the board knows, you know, how to get information and, and just some basic stuff around, you know, what's possible and what's not. So, I would want us, I would want us to think about having some kind of liaison to that board and, you know.
They also, in some instances, are non-voting.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Members, absolutely.
Yeah, yeah.
And I have, I have a comment on section four.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. Number one, letter C, and this will be a Merrill question, and I don't know the answer to this, Bruce, you may. Would the review of actual case files, even from a closed investigation, be allowed?
Yeah, so that's a Merrill thing.
Yeah, that's a Merrill thing.
That's a Merrill question.
Yep, okay.
Okay, all right. Community, anyone from the public have comments in this section? Dan, you're doing something else, is that true?
Yes.
Kelly, okay. Kelly?
Kelly Carroll, just a comment about the ongoing training. If you're talking about terms of two years, three years, four years, you can't really foresee what might or might not come up in that time. So, I think it's good to keep an open mind about some of the, of ongoing training. I mean, if you look at the news, if something happens in another state, it might not be something that we thought about, but maybe we need to talk about, and there might be some training. So, I would just say to, you know, with the ongoing, you just don't know what's going to happen.
That's, that's very helpful, so that we should distinguish between initial training and ongoing.
And ongoing, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
And it does, but.
Okay, anything else on this? All right, so, all right, so, Jim, to your point, I think we're, we're here in the end here. So, the, so the plan would be to take all of these comments, put them together in a document, get more input from Merrill and from the AG's office, police department, anyone else that can help us, particularly with section five, probably work with Michelle Johnson on some of the, the section three on the composition, just how, how to frame that. And bring that back on the 28th. Does that seem what we can do? All right, this is all really good work, it's all really rough and tough to do, but it's worthwhile, so it's worth the effort. So, thank you all very much. That was a long, and I appreciate everybody's patience on it.
Yeah, and I really appreciate the, and I really appreciate the perspective that came from the CPAR, I mean, the task force members. That was really, really helpful to have you guys here.
Thank you. All right, so, we're moving on to number seven, which is economic development strategy and infrastructure update, which is a regular thing on our agenda item. And as you know, we've already approved a first ARPA-funded project, which is digitizing land records. And I, Dan is bringing two more projects to us tonight for us to determine whether we are ready to put funds toward them.
Okay, really, really quick, and then I'm going to get Paul Dansrow to present on Willow Park, and I know Stuart's going to present on that premium pay, so, just a quick, really, and tell me if I'm not being loud enough through the mask, just raise your hand or something, and I'll try to project. But just kind of a quick recap of how this board, the select board, has directed staff to work on ARPA priority projects, or projects that we are actively considering for expenditure of ARPA funds. You recall, there was an initial draft list that was put together by the Economic Development and Infrastructure Committee with town staff and with White and Burke. I remember there were folks pointed, select board members have pointed to that committee that, that oversaw that work. There was then a public presentation on that list, along with a suggestion of priority projects that we should pursue. It was a month-long public comment period regarding those, that list. And we had a public meeting reviewing those public comments and talking about how, how best to proceed. After that public meeting, the select board directed the staff to begin work on the projects that were initially identified as priorities for ARPA funding. And remember, there were several criteria, just, just, I think it's worth mentioning to folks, the criteria that the Economic and Infrastructure Development, Infrastructure Committee used to develop that list. It was whether or not first, ARPA eligibility, obvious, project readiness, community impact, whether or not all stakeholders were at the table, whether or not there was a clear role for the town. And this one's really important, whether or not the project could be funded using other sources. So, a really, really important project that might be funded by other sources wasn't included on the, on the priority list of, to investigate initially. So, I just want to make sure that folks understand that. So, after that public meeting on the priorities and public comments, select board directed staff to begin working on the initial projects to determine feasibility and how, you know, recommendations on how best to proceed. The select board also directed the staff to review the comments and see if any of those comments should, should result in, in projects being added and/or updated. And we did that, and this is the result of that work today. So, want to run through, these are most of the priority projects. And then there's a second slide after this where we're going to talk about projects that we think should no longer be actively considered for ARPA funding. But I'm going to start with the ones that we're continuing to investigate and we're continuing to make progress on, and just kind of give a really quick update. And we'll continue to do this throughout, at least probably every other month, to keep you folks up to date. So, current list of projects that are being. So, current list of projects that are being actively considered for ARPA funding. The Ben High Building, a former middle school, as some folks know it. We are working with the current owner to obtain site control, which is always the first step whenever you're doing a project. And we hope to be able to report on that issue at the next select board meeting. And we hope to actually be putting forth something for the select board to review and hopefully approve as far as proceeding with that project. But again, we will, we're not ready to do that probably until the next meeting. But we, we are hopeful that we will have something for the board to act on, or at least potentially act on, at the next, at the next select board meeting. One of the other projects is the Willow Park Playground Replacement Project. And Paul Danzrow will be updating you folks on that this evening, as, after I finish this quick introduction, or this quick overview and update. And he does have an action item tonight, and I'm going to let Paul go through that, because he's been really running point on that. Another project, Skate Park, which got a lot of public support, which was great to see, a lot of enthusiasm. We expect to have a presentation by our potential private partner at the next select board meeting regarding that conceptual plan and conceptual proposal. Actually, a local architect will be giving that, has committed to give that presentation. Another project is the upgrades, sewer line upgrades to County Street and Benmont Avenue. That is in design now. We're working with an engineering firm to design that, so we can get an idea of, of cost on that. And just a caveat next to that one, we really do think that's probably going to end up being a candidate for other funding through the state infrastructure money that's coming through, the, the state funds that ARPA had, that has been, the state funds that are going, the federal funds that are going to the state for infrastructure projects. But we're leaving it on our list for now, and we, because it's so important, we think it's, we think it's necessary to get the design going as soon as possible, so it is ready if there, other funds do become available. Just a quick kind of background for folks, sewer lines, not real sexy, but I will say that a huge percentage of the town's sewage runs through those lines, and they really do need to be upgraded. So we think it's a real important project, but we're really hopeful that that'll get funding from another source. Kind of the same thing with the South Street, Union Street Stormwater Management improvements. We all know, in front of the town office, every time it rains heavily, we have a nice lake out there, and just not something that we should continue to accept. And we have begun work on that. We have hired a firm to do monitoring for this summer, so that they can get a really good idea about going, what's going on there. And then this fall into early winter, they'll be putting together alternatives for us to review and some order of magnitude costs, which unfortunately, we think will be pretty high. Again, probably a candidate for other funding, other than our municipal ARPA funds. But really important that we get that ready to, to a point where we can go if and when funds are available. We think that municipal ARPA funds are appropriate to get that work done. And finally, as far as projects that are still under consideration, premium pay and benefits for eligible workers, and Tom Andrew Stewart-Herd will be making a presentation right after this regarding that particular effort, that particular project. Just noting down here that the, the town select board did already approve the digitation, digitization of town records. So that's already approved and will be, will be proceeding. In fact, the contract's already been signed. Let's see. So, there were three projects who were identified as priorities for ARPA funding that staff is recommending that be removed from active consideration for ARPA funding. Doesn't mean that we're stopping work on these projects, in fact, far from it. I know Shannon's working a ton on the first one, and we all hope that the Putnam Block proceeds. But the downtown market was on the list, and we've recommended removing it from active ARPA funding consideration because of other sources of funding that are likely to materialize. You know, the, as you know, the board did already authorize a loan, and they're in active fundraising mode right now. So we're proposing that that be removed from the active list. Phase two, the timing just doesn't seem to be, it doesn't look like it's going to work out. And also, we think there are other sources of funding. As you know, no secret, we talked about TIF at the last meeting as a possible source. The other one, sounded like a great idea, capitalization of the revolving loan fund. We loaned some money, we get it back, we loan it out again. Sounds great. But the, you know, ARPA folks, feds thought, thought this through, and it makes a lot of sense. The only thing that we can fund is the subsidy. So, for example, if we were to charge normally 3% interest and we decide to charge 0% interest, we can, we can recapitalize that 3% subsidy, but not the principal. So, there's complicated eligibility issues, and we just think there are other, bigger bangs for the buck than just funding a loan subsidy. So, we're recommending, staff's recommending removal from the list. So, really no action tonight unless you guys think staff's not headed in the right direction. Certainly consensus is good enough for us to continue to work as we are. But just wanted to make sure that you guys knew where we are, what staff is thinking, what we've been doing to date. And again, completely changing every day on, on some of these projects.
Well, wait, can I, can the select board ask questions first? Just, is there anyone that's on, does anyone want to respond to that? Yes, go ahead.
It's not a question, it's actually just a comment, and it's a good comment. As I was looking at this list, it, this, the list of Ben High, Willow Park, Skate Park, blah, blah. It hits every single demographic group in town. Children, teens, adults, seniors, people with disabilities. I mean, it just, it just, there was something in it for everyone, and it just really made me feel really, really good about the list.
And, and you know, that's obviously one of the criteria was impact on the neighborhood, and, and we still, the Ben High projects, 100,000 square feet, lots of possibilities there across lots of needs that the community has. So we're really excited about that one. Just a quick next steps, we're going to continue to work on these priority projects as long as you guys continue to, to request us to do and direct us to do, we'll continue to update you folks. And we'll, as projects become ready for implementation, we'll be coming to you for formal approval. Tonight, you've got two, Willow Park and, and premium pay and benefits. So, you know, every, every other select board or so will probably be before you, hoping to move the projects forward. Jonah's going to update our website regularly, including what we talked about tonight. It'd probably go up tomorrow, so folks can, can see it much more clearly, in written form, what I discussed tonight. But it'll all be up there for folks to review. And also Jonah's going to create on that website a method for clearly tracking, you know, where ARPA funds are being spent. So it's, you know, full transparency, transparency about where the money's going. It's going to be right there. Anybody who wants to see can go look. So that's all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions. Up next will be Paul Danzrow to talk about some exciting Willow Park stuff, really exciting stuff. And then Stuart will talk about premium pay. But any questions in general about staff's efforts on the priority projects, I'm happy to answer to the extent that I can. Lots of folks working on this, definitely not just me. So I may not have all the answers, but if I don't know, I'll be able to get them to you. But I have been coordinating with all the folks that are working on these projects.
Yes, Gary?
I have one question, Dan. The sewer line upgrades and the stormwater upgrades, either one of those projects could conceivably take all of the ARPA funds that we have.
It's, it's very, yes. So that's why we're thinking, that's why our thinking is, they're really, really important. We have to have them shovel-ready, and that the best way to do that is to spend some minor amount of municipal ARPA funds to get them to a point where, when the state and federal, the state funds come through, we can be ready to say, "Hey, we have a project that's ready. Show, we'd love to, we'd love to have the money to proceed."
So what we're talking about for ARPA funds for those would be the engineering piece of it, not the actual project?
So that's what it's looking like. Again, these were all the projects that were listed. You know, if two or three of these fell off because for one or other reasons, if we couldn't proceed with them, we'd want to have a, a project ready to pop in. I'm just want to be full transparency, full disclosure. We don't see those at this time, based on what we know today, as being projects that will likely be full, the implementation will be funded by the municipal ARPA funds. It could be by state ARPA infrastructure funds. It might be federal, other federal, state grants that make them possible. But, you know, if we were to talk about doing all of those projects right there, we would probably double our allocation. So, you know, we don't, we don't want to, we don't want there to be, you know, unreasonable expectations about all, that all these projects are going to be funded by local, to completion by ARPA funding.
Any other questions, general questions from select board? Rose, did you have a general question for Dan?
I think you want to know, is the task senior, what is, what is there about?
So Rose, we're not going to talk about specifics, because when we come back to the select board to either say go or no-go on that project, that'll be the time for us to give everybody the specifics, everybody to have a chance to comment on them, to weigh in on that. We don't, we're just not at a point now where we can give significant specificity for there to be reasonable, you know, ineffective communication on that.
So, right.
It is a project we're considering. It is a project that we're pursuing. But it is not a project that we have the green light to proceed with. We need the select board's approval, and they will determine how best to take public comment on that.
So these are essentially the tier-one projects from earlier on that we, that have already been discussed to the level that we can discuss them until you come back to us with more information.
These are the projects that the select board has said to town staff, "Go investigate, look at the feasibility, do what you have to do to, to proceed and get information about how much these are actually going to cost and whether or not they're actually possible to, to accomplish." And so we are getting, we are narrowing it down very quickly. And I would say within probably 30, no more than 60 days, we should have a really good idea about which projects are going to go and which ones aren't, and have a much better idea about cost.
I really want to thank you. This is really a great process, because we are, it feels like broadening out the funding sources that we have, and really being very thoughtful about where, what money can best be used where. So, and so with that, Paul Danzrow, come on up.
Good evening, Paul. The Astro Director of Facilities, for those that don't know me. Tonight for the board, as Dan referenced, I'd like to present to you a recommendation for the Town in Benton Willow Park Play Structure and Park Upgrade. In your packets, there was a two-page recommendation that I would like to just go through. Bottom line upfront, you know, the overall purpose, just recommend to the board if they would do project award for the proposed ARPA-funded Willow Park Play Structure and Park Upgrade Project, to be awarded to the play by design from Ithaca, New York, in the amount not to exceed $500,000 budget. That's what bottom-line recommendation is. Background, how we got to this point. I know, of course, we had the initial assessment on our 1999 community-built playground, which has served us exceedingly well, has, you know, passed its expected 20-year lifespan, needs to be replaced due to several reasons. One, the maintenance, safety issues, but as well as, you know, does not incorporate universally accessible design principles that are now being part of all playground designs. So, Willow Park Working Group was formed, consists of Jonas Spivak, you know, Communication Coordinator, Shannon, excuse me, Shannon Barsati, Community Development Director, Mark Sawyer, who's the Assistant Director of Facilities, and myself. We met to identify what we thought were the key design parameters, requirements, specifications, and features to incorporate in both the new, excuse me, to incorporate into a new large playground structure, the small playground structure that's up near the upper pavilion, as well as something new, a six-station fitness trail to be incorporated in the park. The working group, we met, a couple, two occasions, and in January 21st, prepared a request for proposals. That was direct sent out to 10 vendors, as well as announced on the Town in Benton's social media sites, posted on the Town in Benton webpage, and published in the Benton Banner for a three-day period. Not to go into all the details of the request for proposal, but some key aspects of it would be, it's a design, was a design-build request for proposals. The project budget not to exceed a $500,000 budget was identified. The new play structures must meet or exceed all federal Consumer Product Safety Commission, CPSC, American Society for Testing Materials, ASTM, and the International Play Equipment and Manufacturers Associations guidelines and standards, as well as meet all Americans with Disabilities Act requirements. In addition to that, the universally accessible playground principles of equitable use, flexibility in use, simple intuitive use, perceptible information, tolerance of error, low physical effort, and size and space for approach and use, which are emergent design principles, and, you know, they're incorporated into playgrounds. That was to be part of this to the extent possible. The age ranges would meet our current requirements for toddlers, age two to five, and age five to 12. Demolition and removal of the old play structures were part of it, the request proposals. And upon award, the firm that's awarded to will provide three conceptual designs that would then be presented to the public for public engagement. Jonah's worked a separate community engagement plan that will go, that's already in action. But the conceptual designs will be part of that to have the community input, and then eventually achieve a final design. Proposals were received on February 28th at bid opening. Six proposals were received by the filing companies, Play by Design from Ithaca, New York, Park Architecture and Center, or excuse me, Park Architecture from New Hampshire, in partnership with Centerline Architects from Benton, Compan, which is from Austin, Texas, Patinelli and Associates from Williston, Vermont, O'Brien and Sons from Medway, Massachusetts, and Ulti Play from Oxford, Massachusetts. The working group then evaluated each of the proposals, using the evaluation criteria that was determined in the RFP. Each working group member ranked ordered each of the proposals. And then the committee, or the working group got together and compiled the results. When we compiled our results, overwhelmingly, the number-one selection from all members of the working group were the plays designed by from Ithaca, New York. The next steps be, you know, upon successful award of the project, a kickoff meeting will be held with the working group and the, and the awarded vendor. From that kickoff meeting, then start the process for the three conceptual designs that be submitted in early April. A community engagement with the conceptual designs would then occur from throughout the month of April. Final design selected, best case, we looked for by the end of April, beginning of May. And then there's, for the Play by Design company, it was a six-to-eight week lead time on equipment. So by that point, if they're from final design, then that would start the clock. But conceptually, it would set us up for having construction beginning in June. And by the end of July or early August, best case, you know, barn, significant issues, our playgrounds would be in place. Subject to your questions, that's what I have for presentation.
Thanks, Paul. Under background, section C.
Yes, sir.
On number four.
Yep.
When you say durable all-weather materials, are you talking about pressure-treated wood?
No, I'm more, more of either composite plastics and/or aluminum-type materials.
So, not to get too granular, but I'm going to. Will these be recycled plastics that they would use?
I would, I would have to look at the, what would be the composition if that was the case.
Because that-
I do not know the answer to that.
That would be ideal. That's it.
Great. Any other questions from the board?
I'm just making an assumption here, but we know-
I'm just making an assumption here, but we know what happens when one assumes. The locations of the playgrounds is the same, right?
Correct.
Okay.
It would be within the same footprint of the large-
Yeah.
-play structure, same footprints of the small play structure, and then the new would be where we would end up site, and would be the fitness areas. That would be something new.
Great. Okay. And then, I know it may be a little premature, but actually, it's next month. Do you have any more details on the opportunities that the public would have to engage in the process? Is it going to be meetings? Do you even know yet?
I think Jonah, as a, as a, well, his community engagement plan, I know he knows that better than I do.
I'm just going to come up to the microphone so that people at home can hear as well. It's really, as Paul had mentioned earlier, throughout the month of April, there'll be a number of engagement opportunities, including a presentation by the vendor of the designs. We're also going to be working with the supervisory union to have a direct outreach to teachers, parents, and children to get their input on this as well. And the details of that is in a report that I have for you guys as well, in terms of what that outreach looks like.
Awesome.
Just in terms of outreach, I would also request, because of the nature of my experience, is that you make sure that grandparents are, you know, we do have a number, so there may be other groups, you know, folks like, you know, at other daycare centers, and there may be other people that just, you make sure you are contacting.
Really, just to be clear, the outreach with the SVSU is in addition to the other public outreach we're doing. And I should mention that of all the Facebook, social media outreach we have done, our posting on the Willow Park Playground redevelopment is our number-one post with over 16,000 reach. There's probably no other subject in this town that has thus, this level of engagement and awareness.
I have no doubt about it.
Yeah, and I'm not surprised.
And you're absolutely right. Of course, grandparents are a key component of this. Thank you.
Yes. The thing about grandparents is that they have grandchildren who are very committed to playing on playgrounds.
Sarah, you had a question, too, yes?
This was something that was asked of me a while ago when this was first talked about. And I don't know if you know the answer to this, but the bricks that were there from when the original structure was there, do you know if those will be there?
As part of the RFP, one of the design parameters was preserving the existing bricks to make them, incorporate them into the final design. And that is, that is part of that. And the vendor has, as part of their proposal, they made that quite clear. They understood that and had an, had an idea and intent for it.
Yes, Gary?
I'm going to recuse myself because my company was part of the RFP process, but I just want to say it was very professionally done. Well done.
Great. Thank you. Any other select board comments? Any questions from the audience? No? Then I would entertain a motion to accept this proposal for ARPA funding. Go right ahead, Bruce.
Yeah, I'm happy to make this motion to approve the recommendation for this replacement of the Willow Park Playground, playgrounds, and the addition of the, what do we call those stations?
Fitness stations.
For that, too. And do we have to have, in the amount of not to exceed $500,000, is that what, how we should do that? I don't know. I'm looking for some help. Right. I'm just thinking about being able to keep it to-
Why don't you include-
Yes, in an amount not to exceed $500,000.
And I will second that.
Excellent. So, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed, please say no. And any abstentions? So, Gary isn't abstaining. Okay. Thank you very much.
No, thank you very much for your time.
And the timeline is excellent. Yeah.
Holy cow.
Yeah. I know, I know. It's all fingers crossed, but yeah. But even to be able to propose it is wonderful.
Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. All right. So, Stuart, we'll turn to you for the second proposal, which is on ARPA funds for premium pay and benefits.
Thank you. When the ARPA funding was initially announced, and one of the things that you could use the funds for was essentially to reward employees for their efforts during the pandemic. Dan and I began conversations early on. In fact, I shared some of our conversations with you folks during my evaluation back in, I believe, in October, maybe even earlier. And we, we decided that this really is an opportunity for the board and, and the community to say thank you to the employees of the town. We're looking at the period March of 2020 to March of 2021, when the pandemic was at its highest level, vaccines were not yet available, and all of us were at risk from contact with one another. We did not lay off any employees. We did not ask our employees to work from home. All of our employees came into the workplace, and even though the town offices and the PD were in fact closed to the public, they were open and available by appointment for those folks who needed to get in and do the work that was necessary to be done. So, in effect, all of our employees took some risk in providing those governmental services during that timeframe. I'm proposing a hazard pay tiered structure, which would recognize police at the highest tier. They were out in the field, obviously coming into contact with people sometimes in very difficult circumstances, so they were at the highest risk. The second tier would be our public works folks, our water and sewer folks, our buildings and grounds people who had to keep all of our facilities clean and sterile to the extent that they could. We also include dispatch in this case because they had to work with the police officers, and they had to actually work with people who came to the windows, who needed to report to the PD on a continuing basis. And then the last tier, the lowest tier, would be the administrative officers of the town. And these individuals actually changed their daily work schedules until we were able to provide the safety precautions, the plastic protections and everything. They, those offices where we had two people working close together actually changed their schedules, offset their schedules, and all of them continued to come into work and perform their jobs in a safe and efficient manner. I think, I think we did a very, very good job. So, the tiers would be, we are recognizing these for hours worked only. So, this does not include sick time, vacation time, time off in any fashion. This is just, you had to work. And for those that were at work in tier one, which is the police department, we are proposing $1 per hour for hours worked. Tier two employees would receive 50 cents per hour for hours worked, and the tier three employees would receive 20 cents, 25 cents per hour for hours worked. It's a one-time payment, and the total cost with ARPA funds would be $86,610. This can be implemented once it's approved. The second, second proposal is for a one-year benefits increase for employees. Bennington is one of the few large towns in the state of Vermont that does not offer dental and vision as part of their benefits package. And I provided in the packet a list of the towns, and there are over fifty in the state of Vermont that offer this to their employees, but all of the major towns that we are close to in size offer this benefit already. So, it becomes a, a recruiting tool and a, a tool to recognize and hold on to employees. These two benefit plans are offered through the League of Cities and Towns. They would cost, estimated based on January 1, payments around $81,200 on an annual basis. I'm sorry, that, $88,100. I note in my presentation that we did save $81,200 because the benefits cost actually went down this year for all of our plans. So, there's ultimately a break-even aspect to this. And my proposal here is to purchase these plans for all current employees for one year. We are currently at a time of negotiations with our public works union, and I believe our police contract has one more year on it. So, for these benefits to continue beyond that year, we would negotiate with our unions to see if they're in fact an interest in keeping these benefits and perhaps some benefit to the employees and to a new contract going forward. If the benefits portion of this is approved, it will be implemented July 1 of 2022. So, those are the two proposals. They recognize our employees. It's a way to say thank you for the efforts that all of them put in, and I'm asking you folks to make this real.
Great. Thank you. Let's take these one at a time. So, any questions on hazard pay from select board? Yes, go ahead.
I think that this is exactly what Congress and President Biden had in mind when they passed the ARPA funds proposal. They intended that some of this money go to, to benefit our frontline employees, and I really think it's, these people worked really, really hard in some adverse conditions, and I think it's on us to, to thank them for, for all the hard work that they did and putting themselves at risk. So, I would certainly favor this proposal.
Thank you. Yes, Jim?
I'd just like to note that during the height of COVID, municipal employees were ineligible for help from the federal government. Is that correct, Stu?
That's true.
So, this is, it's long overdue. They still would be ineligible for federal money, but this is one way that the town can ameliorate or eliminate that, that gap for the fine work that they did and kept showing up to work. So, you got my vote on it.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions, comments on hazard pay? Anyone in the audience have a question? No?
I wish there were more.
Thank you.
I think they're not the only one that-
Come, I think if you'd like to come to the, so this is questions on hazard pay.
I don't, no offense, I don't think they're any different than anybody else, and why should they get it and other people that worked just as hard?
All right. So, you want to answer the-
And I don't think they should get more money because they already get paid too much.
So, so Rose, would you just, for the record, state your name?
Rose Stalford of North Bennington, Vermont.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to, well, Jim, you could either reiterate what you just said, or Stu, one of you just point out the difference, why we can do this now, and the ineligibility of town employees prior to this?
Well, yes, there, the municipal and state employees were not eligible for any of the benefits that the ARPA funding offered for those folks who were either laid off or out of work because of closure of businesses or, or businesses who were forced to pare back due to COVID. So, in this, in this way, the federal government recognized that municipal and state employees, perhaps even county employees, I don't recall, and Dan can either not or not, but would, would be able to benefit through the ARPA funds. And so, we are here asking to recognize the Town of Benton employees.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Would someone like to make a motion? All right. And this is for hazard pay as presented by town manager. Someone second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All right. So, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Please say no. Any abstentions? All right. Thank you. All right. So, let's move on to benefits. Any questions on the benefits package as proposed? No? Questions, comments from the select board? All right. Any questions, comments from the public, please?
Hello, I'm Shirley Adams. I live here in Bennington. I'm just a little bit confused. Mr. Hurd, perhaps you can explain a little bit more. Could this potentially commit us to having to pay for benefits in future years?
Only if, if the unions and the town agree to a continuation. It would be part of the negotiations on both contracts.
Okay. So, I'll take that as a yes, because I think once you give somebody a benefit, it's very difficult to retract it. Yeah?
Right, yes. More than likely, it will continue if, in fact, the select board and the unions can agree.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other, oh, okay.
So, on that issue-
Clark, it-
Oh, yeah. Clark, Clark Adams, Bennington. My question is, can this one-year benefit be presented to the employees or the community as part of a recognition for the hardships endured during the COVID, which I think, you know, the idea of something being taken away from the public, I think it's real important that the community and the employees understand that this is a thank you for past efforts, not a commitment for ongoing benefits.
Thank you, Clark. All right. Well said.
All right. Any other discussion from the select board? All right. Could I have a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion, and I'd also like to make a comment.
Well, in that case, let's make the motion second, and then we'll have more discussion. So, you just made the motion?
I'd like to make a comment after I vote.
I know. So, no. So, so you can either make a comment before we make the motion, or you can make a comment during discussion before-
What is your preference?
Either one. Go ahead and make a motion.
Okay. With, with a comment, is that okay?
Nope.
Okay, what?
Would you rather not make a motion?
Correct.
Okay. Would someone like to make a motion, make a motion in support of benefits for employees for one year for, for dental and vision? Thank you, Jim. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I would, I am going to vote in favor of this. However, I believe this should be a discussion and for a budget.
Okay. Thank you. Any other, any other points of discussion or comments? Yes, Tom?
Yeah, I think it's important to note here that because all these other communities are already offering these benefits to their employees, we're in competition with these towns for workers, particularly police officers, which are having a great deal of difficulty finding right now. So, if doing this eliminates an objection, you know, if I'm looking at two jobs side by side, money similar, one of them offers dental and vision, I'm going with the one that offers dental and vision. So, I think just that alone is reason enough to, to offer this. And I think, you know, I would hope, you know, given the nature of negotiations with the unions, that, that a satisfactory agreement could be, could be arrived at between the towns and the unions. So, I certainly support this measure.
Thank you. Any other comments or discussion? Yes?
I just wanted to mention, it's a well-established fact that the dental health of many, many, many residents in Bennington is abysmal. As we all know, dental care is incredibly expensive, and anything that we can do to help the people that we're employed, that are employed by the town receive dental care, I would be in favor of, to improve their quality of life.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes?
I, I do keep it brief because my voice is very, very difficult. So, yeah, I do agree that we want to retain our employees, and we do want to retain, and I'm going to also keep this brief because it's, it's fading. We do want to keep, we do want to attract new employees, but I did want this to be a budget discussion. Keeping it for, sorry, it's fading.
Okay. Thank you. Point taken. All right. So, with that, shall we vote? All right, so with that, shall we vote? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, please say no. Any abstaining, please indicate. All right, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Great. All right, so next up is a mask resolution. As we know, our mask resolution ended on March 6th, and so we have, I think, two decisions to make. One, what, whether we want to renew the mask resolution and also masking for meetings. And I think, Gary, did you want to?
Yeah.
Say something to this?
I think based upon what we heard from Dr. Dobson, that it makes sense for us to rescind this, our mask strongly recommended stance and that we also get rid of the mask requirement for the select board meetings.
All right, and leave it up to individuals to, to make their own decisions?
Yeah.
All right, so that was a motion.
Second. Still moved.
You can't move it, you made it. Okay, I think Jim just moved it. All right, any more discussion on this?
No, I think, I think Trey Dobson said what needed to be said. And I do hope that people are paying attention to what is happening around them and what's happening in the community. I just would hope that that's what's going to happen.
Yeah, I also, I really appreciated what he said. He was wearing his mask and he would have been wearing a mask even if we didn't have the recommendation in place tonight because of his high-risk behavior. And that's how I'm, I'm making my decisions. If I've done something that's considered risky, my mask goes back on much more frequently than if I've been at home and not going anywhere. So I think that was really, really a crucial piece of information that he shared with us.
And I'd like to just make a comment that even though this is a rescission of the resolution, if facts on the ground change and we get a spike in cases locally, we can always bring it back.
That is the case.
We'll trust the science.
All right.
Is this effective immediately?
What are we going to have, unveiling?
Yeah.
We have to vote first at least, guys. Okay, we ready for the vote? Stu, you already have your fingers on your.
He's ready to come off, so.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, please say no. Okay, and abstentions. Okay, guys, okay, we're halfway through the agenda, let's go. All right, pathways, funding, support. Pathways, funding, support. Are you leading this, us through this, Stu?
Pardon me?
Are you leading us through this?
Sure.
Okay.
The folks, the folks who are supporting the $390,000 for pathways to bring their, their efforts to Bennington County have moved through the first, I think it was the Health, Health Committee, Committee on Health, has supported it. It now moves into the Committee on Appropriations at the House level, and they have requested that we offer our support once again. So the letter is very similar, and I would seek authorization for the chair to sign. I can tell you that Tom D. has already sent on a letter to House Appropriations favoring the expansion of pathway services to Bennington County.
I would move that we authorize the chair to sign that letter.
All right, all those, any further discussion? No? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. All right.
Stuart, should it say sincerely on behalf of the select board?
Yes, it should.
We can, if you insist, yes, we can say that. The first letter said sincerely on behalf of the board, but I understand, we can say it.
I think it should say.
Yeah, and, and we're going to email this anyway, so.
Yes, we will.
Yeah.
So maybe you could stop down tomorrow and.
I can do that. All right, perfect. All right, next up are zoning bylaw amendments. Set the hearing date, and Dan is poised to go.
I'll be really quick. So as you know, SVC campus, the former SVC campus was purchased by the Southwestern Vermont Healthcare System. They had requested that we take a look, the Planning Commission take a look at the zoning on that site and work with them to propose some minor revisions to the zoning to facilitate development and redevelopment of that site in accordance with the historic nature of the property and the scenic value of that property. So all that, the Planning Commission has prepared a proposed amendment to the regulations in the town plan. They are now formally submitting them to you. And the only thing we need tonight, because we're not going to talk in any substance, is for you to set the required two public hearing dates. You can have as many meetings as you want, but you need at least two public hearings before voting on this. I am proposing two regular, two regular select board meetings in May, May 9th and May 23rd. If you folks want to do that, if a motion to do that, to acknowledge receipt and to set the hearing dates on those particular dates would be in order and we could proceed with the hearing. I do know that the Planning Commission, if possible, would like to have a work session with you folks before then, if, if it fits into the schedule, just to kind of talk about their thinking. Obviously, that would be a public meeting open to the public, but it would be a work session if you folks so agree. So that's all I need tonight, acknowledgement of receipt and setting the dates, and we can proceed.
All right, a motion. Bruce is ready.
I am, I am ready to move that we set the two dates for the public hearings on the proposed adaption as May 9th, 2022, and May 23, 2022. And I'm not ready to propose any work session date.
No, not ready for that.
Thank, thank goodness.
And I second those dates.
All right, do I have a second?
I second those dates.
Oh, excellent. All right, any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. Thank you. Thank you, and thank you for choosing dates that were already here.
Yeah.
We appreciate that. All right, support for arts grant, Eric Peterson, who's been waiting patiently.
Your stamina is admirable. Vermont is planning a large celebration for the 250th anniversary of the Battle of Bennington. I've been working with the members of the local organization and also from the Hoozick Township Historical Society on writing a play about the Battle of Bennington that would be presented at some point before the actual year of the 250th anniversary. I'm applying for a creation grant from the Vermont Arts Council that would help in the writing of this. My expectation is that the research will take approximately 18 months, the writing will take approximately 18 months. It's a $4,000 grant, and what I'm asking is a letter from the select board to the Vermont Arts Council supporting the local effort of the play, which would obviously help to get the grant, I hope.
Excellent. Any questions from the board for Eric? This sounds like a wonderful thing, and it would be so wonderful to have a local playwright be writing this play. I guess, can I have a motion that we will write a letter on behalf and, and send it to the, we'll send it to the Vermont Arts Council, yes?
You can send it to me and it'll be included in the application.
Okay, okay. So move. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Do we, okay. Any other discussion before we vote?
Is there a deadline that you need the letter by?
The last day of the month.
March, last day of March, okay.
Okay. Good, thank you for asking these. All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, the implementing the town vision. We know that we dealt with a piece of this already with the Community Policing Advisory and Review Board, and the other piece, the other thing we wanted to address tonight was Declaration of Inclusion Action Steps. So Tom, you are up.
Okay, I will make this as brief as possible because we're running just a touch behind. Initially, essentially what we're asking the board for right now is to, in some direction in terms of, Jeannie and I went through these lists and picked out things we could get started on right away and hopefully get the momentum rolling across the entire process. So we identified five items that we thought we could start on right away. Those are reviewing the town accessibility plan with an eye to what we can do beyond the basics, reviewing the accessibility of playgrounds and recreation to including equipment cost and location, check on Vermont League of Cities and Towns resources on equity inclusion and utilize them where appropriate. The select board should continue to evaluate and discuss the town vision in their meetings. And we are asking that the town include inclusivity clauses on websites and in ads and flyers for community meetings, events, and forums with wording that actively invites people with disabilities to attend and include specific contact information for assistance. That doesn't mean these things are any more important than the other things on the list, but these are things that we can do right now and, and get these done. The only thing I would add is that people, please continue to review the more community-driven action steps because this must be a townwide, community-driven process in order for it to be successful. Jeannie, do you have anything to?
Thank you. No, that's, so we would love your feedback on what we're proposing is sort of the first most accessible recommendations from the action steps and any others that you think should be on this initial list. Yes, Jean?
Is it going to be the two of you continuing this process, or?
I think once we get rolling, it's, it's all of us.
Okay.
I mean, and, and I think as Tom is just saying, the community-driven action steps, hopefully, you know, they will just start happening. I know the SVSU is looking at the action steps that related to their, to them as well.
I guess I was thinking of the ones that you specifically have identified here.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
So the review, the town, who's going to do that work?
Probably looking at the town accessibility plan will be something that we will, we will get the plan from Stuart. Tom and I may look at it initially, but I think we're going to bring it back here.
Okay, I'm offering my help if you need help.
Good, okay. In terms of playground and recreation, I think we will go back to Paul Danzaro. I know that the, I mean, he was very clear in talking about Willow Park, that that was part of, of the review process for that. But I think, yeah, so if you would like, if you would like to join us in, in sort of figuring out how to broaden out this work, that would be great.
Yeah.
Our sense is all these things are coming back then to the board. We're just thinking, these are obvious jumping off points.
Right.
Good, okay. So we're adding Jean to the group, that's good. Any other thoughts about, are any of these, do any of these feel like they should not be on this initial list? No? No? Okay, all right, so then do we have the boards go ahead to pursue these? Okay, super. Thank you. All right, and so I know, I hate to do this because we're over time, but I do want to do this. I wanted to end this agenda item with something that Tortis Islehart sent about a month ago to me, and it is, I think it beautifully sums up what we as a Bennington community are trying to do. And it is from a February 18th New York Times article that's entitled, "This is the Difference Between a Family Surviving and a Family Sinking," and it's by Bryce Covert. And the two quotes are, "Every interaction that a person has with their government, whether that's a traffic stop, or going to the DMV, or getting access to SNAP, that's where democracy is happening. If we get all of those small interactions right, then we've created a society where the government is responsive to its citizens and citizens trust that it will deliver when it says it'll deliver," which I just thought was lovely, and I was so happy that she sent it. So, okay, so given that, we're moving on to the manager's report.
Okay, and I have three action items for you tonight, wouldn't you know? The first is events that require road closures. All of these events have already been discussed with the police chief regarding, relating to our new special events policy. So they start there and then come back to, through me, to you if a road closure is required. So I'll quickly run through these. Mayfest, which is scheduled for May 28th. Streets to be closed would be Main Street from the Four Corners to Valentine Street, School Street from Pleasant to Main, and Silver Street from Union Street to Main from 5:00 AM until 6:00 PM. Harvest Fest, which is scheduled for October 8th, also a BBC-sponsored event, will require similar road closures as Mayfest from 5:00 AM until 8:00 PM. BBC is now sponsoring With Hemmings Cruises, and these are scheduled for May 19th, June 16th, July 7th, and August 18th. These will require closing Main Street from the Four Corners east to Union Street from 5:00 PM until 8:00 PM. And the BBC will work to help clear the street of parking so that the cruising vehicles can park diagonally along the street, and then people will be able to meander among the vehicles and talk with the owners throughout the evening. And then the last, but certainly not the least, is the annual food truck festival scheduled for August 13th, which is a Saturday, in conjunction with the Battle Day celebration here in Bennington. They seek to close Pleasant Street, uh, School Street, I'm sorry, from Pleasant to Main from 8:00 AM until 8:00 PM. And so for you folks, I'm looking for a motion to close the roads for each event as requested.
Does someone like to make that motion? Thank you, thank you. All right, any discussion?
Hi, Wolfstein.
Okay. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no with one abstention. Thank you, that's wonderful. This is exciting, it's going to be an exciting summer.
Yeah.
Yes, it should be. The second action item is, is a new organization that has been created. It's called the Bennington Sports Foundation, and it is seeking partners, not necessarily to support it financially, but simply to be a partner that shows up on their organization pamphlets and everything, indicating a means of supporting the process and, and addressing the need that the Sports Foundation has identified. And they use the quote from Magic Johnson, "All kids need is a little help, a little hope, and someone who believes in them." And I don't know, Jeannie, whether you want to speak a little bit to this since you are now heavily involved.
Well, I guess the only thing I would say maybe is just to read the, the mission of the Bennington Sports Foundation is to provide youth in Bennington County with opportunities to learn positive life skills, good health and wellness habits, and education through sports. And the goal is the programs and initiatives that the Bennington Sports Foundation support will promote teamwork, leadership skills, and positive role models, and encourage community service, and be a positive influence in the community. So, you know, I think as Stu said, we're looking for partners who support the mission of the organization. So with that, I would look for a, well, any discussion? Yeah, go ahead.
I just, I would love for them to come to a meeting and, and introduce themselves in person and let us get to know them, because I, I had no idea, not having young kids anymore, this is a really wonderful organization that I really didn't even know very much about until very recently. So they have a lot to be proud of, and I would really encourage them to come. them to come.
And we'll pass that on.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, could I have a motion?
I'm, I'm trying to figure out what the motion is.
The mo, oh, I'm sorry, could I have a motion for the town of Benning, sorry, for the town of Bennington to be a partner and on the, on the Bennington Sports Foundation website. That is actually the, they asked. Sure.
Are we just lending our name on this site?
That you support the mission. Yeah.
I'll move, I'll make, yeah, okay, then I'll second it.
All right, any further discussion? Sarah, you have.
Do we lend our name to other organizations to put on our site? What other, what other organizations do we do that for?
I don't know.
Well, in, in the past, I see that Shannon has left us, but we, we have become a sponsor of the, I think it's the Arts Council's annual event, and that is a financial sponsor. We actually spend money to sponsor that. I think we have in the past perhaps joined in a sponsorship of Garlic Fest when it was out by the West End. So there are, those are opportunities that we support financially. We've become actually a paid sponsor. In this particular case, they're simply looking for us to partner in support of their mission. So there's no financial commitment at this one. It's just a matter of the town of Bennington logo being there with them.
And other organizations, so the other towns have, have also been asked to support. The SVSU has been asked to support the BRSU, VDA, so, and some larger institutions in town as well.
I guess I'm trying to think of any other organizations that are similar that have come to us with requests similar to that.
I don't know that they have.
Yeah. I don't know. I, I don't see a reason why not to. I'm just trying to think of another example.
Yeah. Yeah, I think besides, I mean, the Chamber and the Arts Council were both financial, were both financial partnerships.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, this is, this is unique. This is a unique request. I don't think we've, in my time here, we've had one.
Right, I'm just trying to think of, yeah.
Yes, Jonah.
I can actually think of one example with the Appalachian General Community Designation that was sort of an example of the town putting its name on something that was a new financial obligation.
Thank you, Jonah.
All right, all right, shall we vote?
Yeah.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Abstentions, I will abstain. All right.
All right, last, but not least, in your packet, there is a photograph of a sign. It's 15 by 15. You're probably seeing them come up all over town. They're starting to appear in places, unfortunately or fortunately, under our new display policy. This requires a sponsor. A member of the board must sponsor. The, the placement of the sign on the town office's front lawn, and once we have a sponsor, I would seek a motion to allow the replacement.
I would allow it to be a sponsor.
I don't understand if they have signs.
Pardon me?
I thought you had, there was a big deal about the sign.
There are, that's why we're doing this right now. So, okay, so we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Any more discussion, any discussion around the sign? No? Then all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. Abstentions. All right.
And the last piece is, for those of you who might read Vermont Digger, there was an article today, S254 has been entirely rewritten. It's even different than what I tried to describe here. And it is moving towards a study or an analysis of the need for elimination of qualified immunity for police officers, probably a year-long study. And there is some reference to a court decision involving the state police that allows for lawsuits to be brought against the state police. The governor has indicated he's not interested in doing away with qualified immunity, so I don't know what, I don't know where it's going, but I just wanted to let you know that it's changed entirely twice now. But it appears that we will not be eliminating qualified immunity this year for municipal police officers.
Okay, thank you. All right, upcoming agendas. So we know from tonight that we have continued, at the March 28th meeting, we will continue the CPAR discussion and also have Economic Development Strategy and Infrastructure update. Anything else that we know will be coming up on the 28th? I'm not aware of anything right now, but maybe it won't be a three-hour agenda. What do you think? Can we hold it? All right.
We'll try.
Okay, all right, all right. So finally, other business. Gary, anything?
I have, yeah, something, I'll make it quick. I just wanted to go back over the, remind people of the St. Gobain Class Action suit.
Oh, thank you.
And I don't know if you have it on the, Jonah, if you have it on the website for the town, but there's significant monies that will be coming back to people who are in, in the area of that settlement. You could talk to David Silver. His number is 802-442-6341. And if you go on the website, www.benningtonbtclassaction.com, you can file a claim there.
I think, I think because this benefits so many people.
It's huge.
In the community, that it's something we probably should support and bring to our website.
Thank you. Tom, anything?
I'd just like to thank our cameraman who looks about ready to collapse for, for working through this whole meeting tonight. That's.
Jim?
What's going on?
Geez.
Two really quick things. Congratulations to every single person who worked on Clue, the play that was presented by the high school over the past weekend. It was fabulous. I laughed harder than I've laughed in a really long time. And I just wanted to let everyone know, we're working with, probably mostly Jeannie, is working with the banner to have a designated spot in the paper where we can update the public who read the banner, I don't know how many times a month, but at least.
Prior to each meeting.
Prior to each meeting about upcoming agenda items and, and business that we're gonna be taking up so people are more aware and maybe will become more engaged, more participatory, and possibly even attend our meetings once in a while if something appeals to them. So I just wanted to give everyone a heads up to be on the lookout for that. That's it.
Very quickly, I, I don't often do this, but I'm gonna thank Mike Bethel for the letter, for his article in the, in the banner regarding voting and how abysmal our turnout was at town meeting. And I'm hoping we can figure out strategies to encourage more people to vote because that was pretty pathetic.
I want to say one thing.
Response to that.
Oh, to, to Bruce?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
It may have been an abysmal turnout. However, I'm exceedingly grateful to those people who did show up and vote. It tells me that there are, there are serious people who are engaged in the affairs of the town and they're serious about it. And I'm grateful to them.
Thank you, Jim. Sarah?
Thank you to anybody that's still watching and also, there was a really great show at Bennington Theater this weekend. It was by Vermont Symphony Orchestra Quartet and there was a jukebox thing afterwards. It was individuals playing drums. There were planters and all sorts of quirky music. It was really fun. $10 tickets, I think you can beat it.
Thank you. Thank you all for all that. Yes.
One, ready to go there?
Yeah. Yes. And then we're going home.
Clark, he's been, he's been here just as long as we have.
Yeah, well, you know, I, on that line, I, I want to be involved. You know, I came to this town because, you know, I fell in love with it and I want to keep it going forward. You know, on the note of involvement in the community, and that's something that my wife and I are just stunned at, how few people show up to participate in these meetings, vote, come to our other meetings with the task force I was with. And, and I'm kind of frustrated trying to figure out how we can actually convince people that you get the government you work to get. And, and, you know, as I mentioned earlier, people saying, well, it doesn't matter, you know, the same people run the show. People who run the show, in my opinion, are the ones who get involved and, you know, get off the bench and go out in the field and play. So I, I just wish there's somehow we, as citizens of Bennington, can involve everyone, you know?
Thank you, Clark.
I just want to get rid of that whispering campaign and get, get people in a positive sense in this town.
All right, it is something we're working.
Yeah, we, we need to have lunch.
We need to hit this meeting, guys.
Move to adjourn.
Okay.
That was worth waiting for. I'll second that.
All right, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Thank you all.